...
This is Tabby.
Here.
This is Frank.
Here.
Mr. Ramon.
Here.
Mr. Guado.
Here.
Mrs. Will.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Allen.
Here.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
To the law of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like to start with our committee reports. Let's start with technology. Dave, come here.
Is there a rubber band back there? I have no idea.
Uh, there's a couple of technological items on the agenda tonight. Uh, first is a new voting item. Uh, so the tool of purchase of Microsoft licenses. Uh, it's just a conversion in my safe guide. Um, it costs us $27.99. It's covered under the state contract. It covers all those Microsoft operating systems on all of our PCs, laptops, desktops. Uh, they also cover Microsoft for our office personnel. It provides all of these resources by online for all of our students at, as well as these defender and server levels. Uh, the first information I have tonight is a single sign-on or SSO, Usual Authentication Resolution. Uh, in an effort to create a seamless environment for our students and staff, we've been expanding our single sign-on, um, authentication. What that does allows our students and staff to log in at one time in their device and then use the correct credentials to access other locations. So for instance, in the past where our students would have to log into Chromebook, and they don't have to log into three boxes or log into starter education, you only have to do it in a day, they don't want to have to do that, they log in one time to, um, their Chromebook, and then authentication process follows up through their applications. So it speeds up the process of, like, to the software. Some of the latest ones that we added were Disturbed Education, uh, STEM SROs, and Big Ideas Math. As more partners begin to, um, allow us to do as a set of authentication, we'll add them as well to the Chromebook handle for all our applications. Uh, second is the 2020-2023 Technology Plan. Uh, we're in the beginning stages of formulating the plan. Um, the District Technology Plan will represent the future's technology drive for the next three years. Uh, we are very, we are very beginning to recruit staff, uh, who are in part of the committee, and we are already beginning to assemble surveys on these for all stakeholders, whether it's students, staff, and community members. The state law that requires a tech plan to be, um, an independent state submission, uh, is essentially to be a tool that provides detailed instruction on how we're going to drive technology. The technology plan now also will be led by the Street Department, so we're at a point that we'll stay back and let the Street Department hold, drive what will be implemented. The final item on this information agenda is the VMware ESX Server upgrade. Uh, we recently upgraded our VMware server host, uh, from 5.5 to 6.5. Basically, those are all servers that manage all of our internal connections, or not internal, but internal, uh, software. Um, there's six hosts. Now they have all these patches, they're all secure, um, and their performance increased. Uh, by operating six hosts, we actually upgraded over nine servers. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I want to go back to the voting agenda item of Microsoft licenses.
Okay.
Would you say, would you say that the students and staff now have access to Office 365 and Web, or is that?
Yes, uh, Microsoft changed the license this year, and one of the things they included, um, obviously people moving away from it, that they offer free, free, safe, private staff and students, online only.
Right.
Um, but they can now have a login that will allow them to access all of these.
And when, when that happened, I know that, you know, the students are, you know, the students are, you know, we expect, you know, the Microsoft application, like Excel and PowerPoint, Word being created, Classroom, or we still expect?
No, there's something to be a G Suite, uh, uh, play, uh, sorry, G Suite applications. Um, it's just another tool that they can use, and more so even at home, um, when they don't have a Chromebook at home, or if they need to use an Office application, it's something that, that G Suite can do.
Uh, my question was for that, as far as the Microsoft products and stuff. These computers that you're pulling this license in, are these new computers?
No, Microsoft, well, some are new computers, but there's, Microsoft charges a yearly subscription fee now, it's no longer a one-time purchase.
It doesn't come anymore?
No, no.
And it's all based in the cloud?
No, it's, the, the software that is included is the actual operating system. So for instance, this summer, we upgraded 1,600 PCs to Windows 10. Instead of having to spend $150 for each unit to buy it, it's part of the subscription, so we're able to install the latest versions as they come out.
And we're not going to use, I'm sorry, we're not going to use Microsoft as far as in the classroom setting?
It can be used, it is part of the period of mass, but since we are one-to-one, most of us are using the G Suite tools.
I don't, I, I, we should be using it, I'm sorry, they should be using it in the classroom. Business world works on Microsoft.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the future better than what you've received with the, uh, school board's graduation? We, we, we can do that, I'll do that. We're gonna do that soon. Absolutely. And we're gonna have the presentation for that, I'll have to, uh, thank you. We just didn't want to have too many presentations, but I will.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Student Services, please.
Mine is actually very short this season. We're going to be going on some instruction, doing better some instructions, continuation, um, having social placement, and continuation of some contact and services for, like, the school.
Thank you.
Can we just go over the committee report on that one?
Oh, what?
The Student Service Committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have an update that's, that was given via email, right?
I've got it. No problem, discussion?
Sure, we can discuss. Um, Mrs. Wright, do you want to lead your discussion?
Sure.
Do you want me to pull up the agenda?
I think it's on there. Yes. Okay. Yeah, so we met, um, on September 10th, and besides, uh, the two items that were just discussed, we also talked about restructuring the CPAC meetings, um, and I think right now there is a proposal to include actually more parent representation in staff at those meetings, um, than really what has been happening in the past, and really trying to, I think, have reflected, uh, as many possible, uh, I think, parents who have, you know, different teams with disabilities, um, there, you know, as much as we possibly can, to sort of expand, I think, the discussions that we've already been having in terms of suggestions, what's being faced, um, by those parents and the students, and what else we could do partnering with them going forward. I don't know if the CPAC meeting, actually, the first one has been scheduled as of yet. I know not yet.
Not yet. We're hoping for sometime in November.
Oh, November, okay.
Okay. I, I just have a afterthought comment, because when I left the meeting, I thought about this a lot. How we were told that, um, I am 100% in agreement, we need representation from all disabilities, and I think that was the discussion that we had. Although I think that we might need to rethink how we're going to get that representation, because CPAC was, um, originally the district and the two representatives meeting with the, um, district people. The way it was explained is the district was looking for those parents with, um, uh, to represent different disabilities. I really think that we should be giving that opportunity to the CPAC leaders to get for them, because it's really their committee, not ours, so that it's not like, it doesn't look like we're stepping in death in whatever we're doing. And then if they can't get those people, then we absolutely could step in, but I think we need to give them the leadway to grow their committee of different representatives, because coming from us, it's just a top-down, you know, it always looks like it's, you know, handpicked people, and it's not. I think we need to give them the opportunity to grow their committee.
I'm good, Beth. Do you want to have any objection to that?
No. One second.
Uh, Mrs. Wright, could you reach out to them about that? Uh, the CPAC leaders?
So, yeah, I tried to actually reach out to these, uh, I'll get that. Trying to, you know, actually talk to each other.
Okay, and then maybe she can make some recommendations, like, who's new?
We can hear, I'm not sure what's being said, but over here, we really can't hear the sound off. Can you, can I make sure you're, everybody's using their mics or something?
Hello? We're saying that we're gonna, um, ask the leaders of CPAC to, um, locate, um, some children with, uh, different disabilities, so that they can grow their committee.
Have their parents.
The parents, I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm, I'm just a little confused, because like, they're a separate entity, right? Like, I don't know, I don't know what the decision, how we can make a decision for them to grow their?
We can't, but that's what was explained to us at our committee, that you were looking for, um, other parents, and you were reaching out to the schools, and my afterthought was, when I went home, is that we shouldn't be doing that as a district, we should be letting them do that, and then if they can't?
Well, there's two separate situ, like, things here. We have our Friends of Different Learners, which is a parent organization, and then there's the CPAC, which is, is, uh, a committee that is, um, kind of like a joint committee between parents and the district. It's not Friends of Different Learners Committee, yet it's not our committee either. It's a committee that we work with the, oh, sorry, it's a committee that we work together with our parents to bring ideas to the district and share, you know, share dialogue. And my question was, no?
No, it's not. I, I've attended it for years. What it is, is the leadership from Friends of Different Learners is the representatives on CPAC, to the same two big, same group.
They are, they are one group.
And they're representing all of the parents with disabilities, and we all agree that we need to get more participation from different disabilities so that everybody is heard. But it's the same group. They're, they're the Friends of Different Learners leaders, and they meet with the district every month, and they talk about what's said at their meetings, not really what this is.
And I understand that, that is how it was done, but it doesn't mean that they are the only group that can participate in our CPAC. We'd like to get a broader representation than, you know, yeah, if they have more representation, I think we'd be okay with that. We are just trying to get a broader representation. If they can provide that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's exactly what, and you were saying the same thing, just in different ways, is that we actually want to reach out to them, because they do have the contacts, two of the parents, and say, you know, it's only been the two of us, basically, the two leaders at these meetings, and we want everybody to have the opportunity to be able to come. So that's, I think, what, because many of these are saying, and I actually agree with, is we should really go through them first, because they actually have more of those relationships, right, with those parents, because they've already had that group established, and see if they can actually get the different parents to come. If not, if they then come back and say to us, well, it's only been the two of us, and no one else wants to come forward, or, you know, doesn't have the time, they don't have to think about other ways to actually grow that group.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to make clear, that if, if, if we don't get a broad representation for the, from that group, we can reach out to the schools and ask the principals or whoever, the child's, they can, to reach out to parents to get, uh, you know, additional representation, so that we have someone from every school represented at our age, you know, and, and a broad range of, of parents.
Or not even necessarily someone from every school, someone from every disability, that was the key, to cover all disabilities.
Okay, great. So now we're gonna move on to, uh, curriculum, curriculum?
Okay, so they have a couple, um, informational items. First, uh, update on the user ready for Mr. Olson.
Thank you, speakers. So we're honored to be literally of a lot of four districts throughout the state of New Jersey, to be honored at Silver with distinction in the futureing process. It is the highest level currently available. Uh, means we've gone through broad, as you're a little aware, also silver last year. It's an evidence-based process, and that's what's extremely important to us, give us the opportunity to reflect, to grow, curriculum sampling, infrastructure, continue to push what our students can do to personalize learning for all students. The other piece that I think is also unique, we've had the opportunity to run and grow many other educators in future, uh, ready districts, those who, of the hundreds that were submitting, to also learn from that, that's really put us in a very strategic standpoint, because we do have leadership in each of those communities, with the educational practice, leadership and infrastructure. So it's a tremendous honor, it's, uh, big part of the work, I'll give you first the letter, post on the website, you have not seen it, and we continue to grow with the process as we go ahead, of course, since the first part.
Hey, Dr. Kerrigan and Mrs. Von Lauder here to give an update, um, on initiative that actually, uh, started very late in the school year, uh, in June, and they continued. Uh, they're representing on behalf of all the curriculum directors, uh, collaborative effort with the teachers in all of our secondary subject areas, core subject, all subject areas, uh, on standardized grading practices, which has been a long time conversation.
Good evening, everybody, it's great to see you all. So in, at the, uh, on parent request and in collaboration with teachers, last spring we started to dive into grading across all of the middle school and, um, high, high school, um, settings, across all content areas. And we're looking to, we're not looking, but we have started a process to standardize, um, the grading across the departments.
And what this process looked like was, in the springtime, we had departmental meetings, we had teachers organizing groups based on the subjects they taught, the grade levels they taught, et cetera, and they came up with recommendations for what they thought would be a fair and consistent grading practice across the board. It's all their feedback, and then as the year started, we came up with some common grading practices, where we have some broad categories teachers can use to assign grades, but there's some consistent percentages across the board for all students. So we're gonna revisit this as the year goes on to make sure that everything is working out well, and that we are providing the most equitable experience possible for all students across all segments.
Are you providing a dual grading system? You know, the one you're looking at and the one that's presently in place, or are you going this new one in?
The new one rolls in for everyone to implement, and we'll, we'll continue to get feedback from it if we need to make tweaks at the end of this school year, um, after the first year of implementation, prior to it, then we'll do so, but everyone's implementing, um, as agreed upon by all the teachers in the department.
So we got feedback from all the teachers, and we really did work as a team in order to put in place something that they could experiment with, with percentages in, in each category, and just, like, figure out if it works, like, where, and what tweaks we have to make. So it was definitely a huge collaborative effort, and then we started this September trying to put it in place, or put it in place, and try.
I actually saw it roll down back to school night, I saw the teachers would give their presentations, I saw them.
Mrs. Caruso is gonna give a quick update on, um, our district assessment schedule, uh, that was on, uh, that has been published on the district website, as well as, they had a meeting just this afternoon of the district assessment committee, um, with regard to reviewing our honor roll criteria.
As far as the district assessment schedule, we're going to see it briefly in the middle of the other presentations, so I don't think we'll be in that yet. As far as the, um, this afternoon, this afternoon, we met with secondary teachers and administrators, middle school and high school, on the topic of honor roll and high honor roll criteria. One of the schools in particular came to us last spring and said, could we analyze and review the criteria and make sure it's still up to date, that it needs to be tweaked or whatever? So today we began that process. We had a meeting for 24 voluntary people that came after school, in addition to the wizard administrators from all five secondary schools as well, and several of the directors were there, and we began a discussion. We, um, showed them the existing criteria, the high schools and the middle states. We, thanks to Thompson, who's done a lot of hard, you know, and criteria from neighboring districts, their criteria for what they use for the honor roll. We compared our, our high school and our middle school honor rolls, and we started a discussion on what it is that may need to be tweaked. I gave them all, they all went home, went back to their buildings, and to speak to the other teachers that weren't at the meeting, administrators, and to talk to the parents in their communities now, and let them know this process is taking place. We will continue to, um, we're going to meet again, and have children to read, if they have time to do this, and discuss some of the proposals, that if we need to work changing the honor roll criteria, if necessary, and then we will be bringing our recommendations to you, once we've come to consensus, we'll bring those recommendations to court, to know where, what we'll be doing before, hopefully, we publish the, um, course election that I plan next year. Okay, so that is the plan, and we've been on the process as of today. Okay? Questions?
Thank you.
Before we go full fledged into our district, um, student data presentation, um, I do just want to highlight a couple of the voting agenda items. Uh, the affiliation agreement with King University, uh, would allow us to expand our partnership with local colleges and universities to place student teachers and practitioners, like school psychologists and guidance counselors who are looking for replacements, uh, in order to complete their certification requirements. Um, professional development, you have, uh, the homeschooling notifications in there, where just basically recognizing, affirming, um, that we receive them, because we don't vote to approve them by law. Uh, and then the responsive classroom, um, uh, the purchase of professional development requires a vote. So we have kicked off with quite a vengeance this year, um, at our elementary level, as well as at Bay Shore Middle School, with a select group of private teachers who got trained this summer, um, responsive classroom. We talked about this last spring, um, it is our social emotional learning, uh, curriculum, and it is being implemented in all 12 elementary schools. This year, we're focusing on the launch of morning reading. If you're on Twitter, you probably see a lot of examples of that happening in all of our schools every morning. The students are responding very favorably to it, it is widely being accepted by parents as well, we received a lot of positive feedback from parents already, as well as teachers. So this next round of training is to, um, provide those who have received training last year as our Level 1 training, uh, component, now getting them to Level 2 training, because they're kind of our teacher leaders for this effort, and they continue to turnkey and provide professional development for their colleagues. So, um, this, this is a, um, structured professional development program by the responsive, uh, classroom center, and, uh, we are going to be hosting it here in district, you don't have to go outside of, of the district, it'll be coming here, and we actually utilize, uh, surrounding, uh, professional development days that were built into the calendar, um, to reduce the amount of time the teachers are out of their classes. It's really paying, uh, great, and it's already just pretty, so we're really excited about it. All right, Mrs. Caruso, hand it over to you.
Now the annual standardized testing presentation that we're going to do. Um, we're, we're going to go ahead and leave here tight and take a break, finish things not in your traditional way. I'll very quickly go door to traditional presentation, we've already done in the past with the board, and then we're going to have an audience and board participation segment, and we're just going to ask you to help us analyze data. My own was happening in the states for the past couple of weeks, using data cameras. We've all sustained, um, I said it was a little bit more active, and they're seeing around the city to a small, so we hope that'll work out, we hope you enjoy it. Okay? Ready? If you may have seen a little bit of that on Twitter, some of the schools have started this already, well, you'll be members of listeners this summer. Okay, the first slide is referring to the list that we just mentioned a minute ago. On the district website, there is the assessment schedule listed, all the assessments that we use, the standardized assessments that we use in district. Under the curriculum and instruction tab with the district website, anybody can pull that up at any time. So there it is. That's slide one, telling you that's where it is if you want to refer to it. It is by grade, elementary school grades, middle school grades, and then high school grades. Okay? Okay, slide two. The next slide talks about the change of the placement state in New Jersey as far as the state's standardized assessments this past spring. Okay, if you recall, um, the state is no longer part of the PAR consortium, where very few states involved still in the PAR consortium, New Jersey has started their own, New Jersey Standardized Learning Assessment, we don't prefer to use PAR anymore, although parents are still saying that, it's the NJSLA, for ELA and for mathematics. All right, um, that's the second bullet, and then the third?
Oh, oh, sorry.
They're shorter now, it's just a nap shorter, that's another change, that's why it's on that, so, okay? That's the third one, okay. On March 18th, we received, received a letter from the state of New Jersey, the commissioner telling us that we're not going to test the 11 graders on the state assessment last year. Well, yeah, we were preparing for it, then on March 18th, we received a letter saying 11 graders aren't taking the tests, we're like, okay. So only up to 10th grade took the test. The state made that change that late in the year, and that's been a little bit important to that, at that point. That was a big change, so we didn't know going into the year, but we found out in March. Okay, so last year, we only tested grades three through 10. Okay? All right, okay.
Yeah, basically, so we said.
Same thing, okay. All right, importance, applications of standardized test data, um, these are the reasons that we give standardized tests in the first place. This is similar to what we've seen every year, as far as the rationale for why the state has such a thing in place. I don't need to read it to you, but there are implications as well, as for the tested grades, for the grades that come before that, kindergarten through the second grade, in preparing students for the test phase. That's one of the things that we've mentioned out here. Um, teacher self-reflection, identifying, planning, mediation for students, of course, assisted differentiation, differentiation instruction, um, personalized learning, the new one. On this slide, the one thing that is new is the bottom bullet, we now have, um, learning design teams in each of our schools, who were very active these past, yesterday in particular, in guiding their staff and analyzing the data from the standardized assessments in their building. Okay, and you're going to be the learning design team tonight, so we'll see. All right, if you recall, these are the five levels that the state uses to assess, to assign the child's performance once the report comes in. The reports for standardized assessments were mailed to all the parents this past Friday, so they received them over the weekend or this Monday, um, in everybody's home, from grades three straight up to 10. All right, um, the report will tell a parent for ELA and mathematics, we've gotten nothing on sign, the state hasn't sent the same here, I'll hit that soon, um, what level the child is at, and how they compare to other people in the district throughout the state. Okay, so you may have seen that in your parent, of a child, you've seen the reports, those are the levels, from 1 through 5. New Jersey considers levels 4 and 5 as proficient or passing, meeting expectations or above. Other states that have used PAR, or, you know, similar to NJSLA, use 3, 4, and 5. So New Jersey was more rigorous in what they expected as far as proficiency than other states were. Okay? This is a five-year trend, comparing how our district did to the state, and ELA is total, and mathematics is a total percent proficient or above, level 4 and 5 proficient or above. And you can see, every year, in both subjects, we were above the state by a certain number of points. This shows the differential between our district and state. For example, last, this past year, the state, 57.8% of the students were proficient or above in ELA, and 44% in mathematics, in the state of New Jersey. In our district, it was 65 in ELA and 53 in mathematics, so we were above the state by 7.2% in ELA and 9% in mathematics of the students, so, and every year, it's something similar to that. Okay, this, this chart is way too small for you to read anyway, but you're going to see it up close in a few minutes, looking to the active participation part. This is a comparison for the past three years of what students were in each level, Level 1, Level 2, what percent of the students fell into each level for each test. Okay, but again, the numbers are too small, they're there because we're going to flip this presentation on the website for the public to see later, and then they'll be able to see the small numbers.
And we've highlighted grade 8 in ELA, because that tends to be considered a benchmark year. Um, for those of you who have students who have attended school long enough, or maybe you're educators yourself, you know that the way the old standards were written, it was usually by the end of grade 4, students will be able to, by the end of grade 8, students will be able to. So there are those benchmark years where we're looking to see overall student performance, because just like not every child walks at exactly the same, you know, point in time, you know, not everyone is a walker at 12 months, two days old, not every student meets proficiency at exactly the same time. But by 8th grade, which is a critical year, we're looking to see, have our students moved, considering that each student moves at a different pace, uh, to, close to or, or at those expectations. And in math?
Well, I'm not upset, it was another ELA slide.
Sorry.
We have, there were two more ELA slides.
I'll talk, I'll talk.
That, that would just compares the district, the second, small, this slide for ELA compares the district to the state for each of the levels. Okay, and again, that will be part of the presentation on the website, if you want to look at those numbers more closely, you'll see it again in a better, more visual, visually please, in form in a few minutes. Okay? So the next one talks about participation, in 2018, 6,543 students, um, participated in ELA in grades 3 through 10 in the eastern district, and then last year, there was only 5,000. Why is that? Because we didn't test the 11 graders last year, that, of course, is going to drop the numbers, and we can't compare them, you know, the same way we do before, 11 graders, 11 more.
Just one example of how you have to really read into the data, because if you just looked at that, you'd assume, why did all those kids, where did they go? Why aren't they taking the test? So.
Okay, and this is the same. And this is the same three charts, but now for mathematics, the same percentages for each of the five categories for each of the past three years. And then the next one is the district versus the state for the past few years in mathematics as well. Next one. Oh, by the way, the green arrows, you're going to notice that again, too. The green arrows show that we exceed the state in every grade in math and in ELA for each grade except grade 10, which is primarily, which is geometry and mathematics. And it was grade 10 in ELA, in ELA also. Grade 10 is the one grade level where we don't exceed the state when we talk about. Okay, and that's the participation rate again, it's down. Like the previous year because 11th graders did not take the test. Okay, the other test we want to look at, which is SATs, all right, the Spolastic Aptitude Test that we give every year. This is just a 11th grader. You should know there's also 12 graders in the years that take the SAT exams, all right, every year in preparation for college given by the college board. We totaled up all of the students from August 2018 to June 2019 and then the previous year, August 2018 to June 2017. So the year that ended in June, how many students took the test, averaged out, weighted average based on how many students took the test and what their mean was each one of those times to figure out what the mean was for the whole district. Okay, and this is how the case. The total number of students this year between north and south and together was 953 students that took the SATs in 11th grade. Their mean score was 1,141, the combined score, that's ELA and mathematics together combined score. Year before, 807 students in 11th grade took the test. You can see there's an increase in how many students took the SATs. So that may change the mean. If you think of it that way, you'll see something in it that we saw yesterday that we see a different thing. The total mean last year before was 11.5. Compare them please to the state means though. We also, the purple section on the last column, put down the state mean on the SATs score last year and year before to compare to the district means. So we were off by two points, not significant one year and four points the other year. But, next slide.
I...
This article was published in the Washington Post just yesterday, so it's not just us. Throughout the country, SAT scores dropped to the class of 2019 where participation rates increased. More students took the chance of taking the SATs and that affected the mean throughout the country. So it happened here in Middletown, but it happened to everyone. So that's why the Washington Post presented that article.
And what we do want to recognize is here in Middletown, what we experienced is that 150 more students stopped to take the SAT and took that risk and then expressed an interest in perhaps pursuing college coursework. That's usually why a student takes the SAT and we're very proud of that. We're proud that more students are taking that risk and expressing that interest. And, you know, statistically speaking, when more students take the test, even though the students who took the test in previous years may have raised their proficiency levels or their scores, their means, new students who are taking it for the first time typically, as a first-time test taker, don't receive the highest of scores. So that, as the Washington Post article described, that can tend to lead to a drop in your mean, which is what the nation experienced and what we kind of saw here in Middletown. What we are happy about is it wasn't statistical or quantifiable difference when you're talking about, I think, a four-point difference between our two...
As opposed to two points. So...
Can I get a little water?
Why are students taking the test?
Just curious. And again, we did different that we could say we interpret correctly?
I, I don't, I think that more, I think students are being exposed to more opportunity, more opportunities that exist that perhaps they were not aware of. Yeah. And that a pathway through coursework, whether that be a community college that requires SATs, you know, that they feel they should...
Are these the students that got into, that when they came in as freshmen, did we do something different for those students that maybe changed the outlook for 11th grade?
Um, I think the introduction of our pathways and our academies, I think the presentations that our curriculum directors do with our pathway advisors, and I think it's really about students understanding what possibilities is after high school. Then they're motivated to pursue test-taking opportunities that can lead to other pathways beyond high school. And that's, the SAT is an entryway, too. It's a gateway to other possibilities after high school.
One possibility, now that I think about it, Chrissy, if a student does not pass the state test, if they have to pass to graduate from high school, the state allows alternative methods of being able to graduate from high school. And one of those is an SAT transfer, which might encourage some of those students who didn't pass the other way and fulfill the graduation requirement to take the SATs and get the cover for that. So there's a variety of reasons.
I'm just trying to figure out why.
Yeah.
Are they going to take the CE, whatever, the classes that we give?
The AP exams. We're working very hard on increasing those because we want our students to take advantage of the financial opportunities that exist for them in significantly reducing their college costs by participating in these...
Working on that soon.
The deadline is Monday, so it's quickly approaching to register for those exams.
I noticed there's a big difference between the two high schools and the numbers that kept it. Why do you think that is?
Um, quite honestly, I mean, we are talking, they are not like schools. Um, you know, what we're constantly encouraged to do by the state department is not resort to what districts who have two high schools often do, which is compare the two in your district. If they are not like schools, they should not be compared. You have to compare them to like peers and they are not in like peer groups.
Socioeconomically?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't want to compare them that one stick...
No, I know, I'm like...
But, you know, just curiosity because of like the difference. And if it's socioeconomically, maybe there's something we can do to help that out.
So, sorry, just another question. So the NJSLA and the SAT here are more similar.
NJSLA.
They're just similar in terms of what they are, right? So people take SATs generally one of the college where we have a test that basically we're assessing. So when you look at those results, what's that?
Correlation.
Yeah, there's correlation. We need better to state. So first question is, do we have comparables for both other districts versus the state ranks? States are grab bagged in a lot of different areas. And secondly, what does it tell you, the SATs being under, the NJSLAs being over, so in other words, folks that are actually focused on college, you know, we're about, we're about on par. So what does that tell us about the two tests or what are the results?
Well, what it definitely tells us is that our high school NJSLA results do not reflect our student outcomes and potential. Because if you compare our SAT results to the NJSLA grade nine or 10 results, it's a tale of two different stories. Those are areas, as Mrs. Crusoe pointed out, where we're not outperforming the state. But yet, when you look at SAT data, we're pretty much right there. Oftentimes, with your NJSLA data when it comes to high school students, because of the way it was rolled out initially a couple of years ago, you're not getting every student participating to the same level of effort. And your AP students are automatically disqualified from your language arts exam because they are expected to take, to take their AP exam. And other students who have advanced through mathematics more quickly in their high school careers are not taking those traditional exams like geometry at a traditional standpoint in time like a typical peer mine. So there's a lot of factors that influence our NJSLA results. To your question about like schools and like, you know, are our schools looking, or are we looking at how we compare to like districts? Within a complex district such as Middletown, where we are very socioeconomically diverse, our learning design teams participated in professional development training a couple weeks ago. That really guided each learning design team to only look at their data relative to a like school, kind of like we were just discussing with our high schools. So to even look at our district-wide results can be conflated and confusing because you have a natural tendency to compare your 12 elementaries when your 12 elementaries are not demographically alike. So our learning design teams are comparing their school's test data to like peer schools who have similar demographics to their school. And that's what they worked, they started actually about a week, last week. They started that work. And we're getting, we started our principal meetings. We had two so far. So when we have the follow-up meetings next month, we're interested to see what they've uncovered about their own schools when they compared their school data to peer groups.
I think we'll see that.
Regarding to your first question...
Hope you can see that when that's all...
That's something that Dr. George and I can discuss.
Yeah, I can maybe have people, we can work on, see.
I mean, they use it because, again, data is used to ask questions. Data is used to drive instruction. Data is not a final destination. It's not an endpoint and it shouldn't be used to assess a grade. Because, again, not all students move along the continuum of learning at the same rate. So that can also be, you know, misconstrued in one-day, two-day, three-day types of assessments like the NJSLA data is. What we do here is we look at more of a holistic approach. We look at multiple data points when we take into the consideration the profile of our learners. And we've just, because of the board's support of our partnership with Lincoln, we actually just expanded our student profile measures to include what they call fingertip files. So our teachers, because it's not even just about a school, it's not even about a grade. To us, it's about every kid. And where does that student lie on their pathway to mastery? And I know we hate to say mastery, but really, I mean, that's the term the state uses, right, towards standards. And that's what we want to get our teachers used to thinking of, every student and their specific needs. So by looking at each, you know, by, by schools taking a holistic approach, they may be able to find where are their gaps? Are there standards that within our school, we are not performing, you know, just grade level-wise when we look at peer groups? But more importantly, where does each student lie? And where do we have gaps to close or where do we need to provide enrichment to continue to put students at a place where they can continue to excel and move towards, if they've already exceeded their standards and/or move them towards the standards?
Fair enough. But in terms of being on board, how do I get a view going into the planning, right? Of how we're going to handle this? You know, comparing us versus comparable districts helps us to understand where we are. Because, you know, we sort of mix things together sometimes when it's convenient, sometimes it breaks it apart. And it's really hard to engage what KPIs am I looking at, right? How do I know where we're performing? And I understand what you're saying, but I, so if there's any sort of information like that by school or whatever?
The state has actually stopped releasing. We used to be coordinated, we used to be grouped into district factor groups by the state that allowed us. And the state would give us reports and they would compare you to your alike district factor group. The state has actually stopped collecting data in that way because of some of the things we've just talked about, the nuances with the data and how data can be misleading, you know, and start making you make conclusions that are inaccurate. And they, when they issue the school performance reports, because this is all linked now more to student growth percentiles, the SGP's, again, they're looking more closely at each individual's child, each individual student. So they haven't, they've kind of removed the measures that you're probably referring to that allow districts to make those comparisons because they are too emphasizing more looking at each individual learner.
One more question, I'm moving along. The NJSLA, it's definitely shorter. You know, we're comparing it over a year. You get a report saying, oh, the growth rate or whatever, your child's in this percentile. How do I look at this? Is this easier, harder? I don't, you know, how do you compare the growth comparison? I love the grades...
Good question. Really good question because it is two different tests. And we all know that an apple to orange comparison is oftentimes, you know, how accurate is that? Student growth percentiles are based on how students who performed like me on last year's test did on this year's test in relation to how I performed. So that is where they're forcing that peer-to-peer comparison is in the SGP scores of our, of our students. So when you look at your individual child's report, that's what you're really looking at. When you look at their, their growth percentile or their growth from year to year, you're looking at, they banded your child with the other students from the previous year who scored like them on those assessments. And did they make comparable growth, exceed the growth of that peer group, or did they underperform compared to that? So they, they, they really do try to make an apple to apple, they turn it into an apple to orange, they turn it into an apple to apple that way.
Since you're at schools, these are different tests.
These are different tests. Yes.
But the means, because they're the one...
Right.
Are supposed to be comparable.
Right.
Okay. And as far as your question about other districts and how they're doing with the state, this is a slide you're going to look at in a couple of minutes that might give you any clue to the answer to that. As far as the science assessments I just mentioned before, they have not given us any data. Last year was the first year of the science assessments counted. The year before, that was a pile of numbers. So just as late as July and August, there was still meeting with teams of teachers, of which we had participation in the state level, to help grade those tests and come up with how we should be reporting that. But nothing has been given to us yet because they are so new. So we'll get that, whatever that is, we'll share it with you. Okay, as far as the, remember the science test only given grades five, eight, and 11. Right, and this is the final slide from our traditional presentation that talks about resources for parents, how to read the performance reports that they got. There's a cover letter that we put together that Dr. George signed and defined everybody's report telling them, you know, a link they can go to for detailed information on how you do those reports as well. And some of the other resources the state is now making available to parents to help them better understand the state test. Okay? And those are linked on that slide if you wish to get them from the website. This is the slide I was just referring to. We just saw this for the first time last week in the district. State assessments moving forward. The state's plan is a little bit different. They will no longer be moving forward, as you know, they stopped testing grade 11 this past year. According to what's written up here, this coming year, we will test the same grades as we tested this past year, three through 10. The following year, however, if you look at 2020 to 2021, they're only going to test grades three through nine. They won't be testing grades 10 anymore in the state of New Jersey. No 10. Those students will be tested the following year when they hit 11th grade. Check out the bars over there. When the students that are in 10th grade this year hit 11th grade the following year...
No, ninth grade district.
Next year. I'm sorry. Next year hit 11th grade the following year, that's when they're going to be testing. In other words, the state is going back to an 11th grade test, which is what we were at originally, before they brought in Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, Grade Nine, Grade Ten, Grade Eleven, English. So they're going back to an 11th grade test. If you look up here, starting in the year 2021 to 2022. All right, so how are other states performing? I think they're not finding the grade testing to every grade all the way through high school successful. And there has been lawsuits about that, they're testing all these grades, I'm sure you all heard that. So they are only going to be going back and testing grade 11 in the state of New Jersey. If the data they gave this limitation timeline is accurate, they say we can don't change it again, this is what we're expecting if this is going to test. Okay, so stay tuned. Okay, stay tuned. Questions? Okay. All right, the next two slides appear in the course selection guide that's on the website and they talk about what the state of New Jersey graduation requirements are for each of the classes in 2020, 2021, 2022. That's our seniors, our juniors, and our sophomores. We do not know what the graduation requirements yet will be for our current freshmen because the state hasn't shared them with us yet. And the state has sent this memo that says, we understand that people want to know this and we'll try to get this to them in a timely fashion as soon as that decision is made. But we do not know the expected graduation requirement yet for the freshmen when they graduate from high school. We do know that currently, students must pass the Algebra I assessment, the assessment. And as far as English Language Arts, they have to pass grade...
10.
Grade 10. Okay, grade 10, they will try to start some Algebra I and mathematics. If they don't pass those, they're all alternative, like SAT scores and so on, they can use to graduate and fulfill the state requirement. to graduate and fulfill the state requirement. That is all in the course selection guide as well, and all these two slides. The next slide is the specifics for the alternative mathematics. Small print up here, easy to read, of course, much in depth on the website. Okay? All right. Oh, this is a little bit of good news, I know we've heard this. Ed, we, education, we came out recently and shared with us that the state that now has the top spot as far as the quality of their schools in this country, New Jersey, for the first time ever, New Jersey has the top spot. Nationally, our spot is like, I know. So that is this memo, what about that? Share some good news. It's on the website? What? It's in the presentation, it's on the website.
Very good.
Okay. That's all presented, so.
Okay. And what's important to reinforce with that is, going back a few slides where Mrs. Crusoe talked about the fact that New Jersey has one of the strictest and most rigorous expectation-setting levels to begin with. But the fact that in spite of those rigorous levels, or because of, some people will say it's because of the fact that we have those rigorous expectations, students rise to them and we are, we are outperforming 49 other states and the territories, you know. So it's nice to say. We topped Massachusetts for the first time. They've always been up there.
Massachusetts. Okay, this is where the audience participation, board participation segment begins. Middletown Township Public Schools Data Carousel. I stole this record from one of our schools, a little carousel, it's got a little lion on the carousel, a little beetle on the carousel, on the side. All right? So this is a little quote about data that the school used. Things get done only if the data we gather can inform and inspire those in a position to make a difference. All right? So we're going to have a mini, we're not having a whole true data carousel because we don't have time, we'll agenda, I just want to do this. We're going to have a mini data carousel right now. Okay, this is where we're getting a little bit risky. We're going to break the audience up into smaller groups, board members and audience members together. We're trying to stick with groups of no more than four if we can help it. Throughout the room, we have home data in seven different locations across the room. So we're going to break everybody into seven groups and we're going to let them go, to let them go to the data charts, spend three minutes, I'll show you where, three minutes looking at each data chart, coming up with a couple of, a couple, maybe two or three questions about each chart. Notice I said questions, not conclusions. What Mrs. Fickers said before is very, very important. You don't look at data and say, draw a conclusion immediately. You want to ask why, what else do we have to look at more deeply now? Now that we've seen this number, what questions do we need to ask to figure out the reasoning behind what we need to do to improve? Okay, so we're going to ask questions about the data, just don't worry about it, without jumping to conclusions, because anybody who knows any data analysis knows how dangerous that is. Okay? All right, so we're going to have a mini data carousel. So let's see how we're going to do this. We need groups of four.
So you want to start over here, because this is your first set of...
I could go.
Well, we could take Leonora, Joan, and maybe two members of the audience.
Okay, which just happens if the audience is on to choose.
Here's one group of members from the audience that would like to participate. This is the kind of district-level data that Mr. Little was just reporting to you, that schools are looking at.
Down the bottom one.
It's the district-wide data, the schools are looking at not only the district-wide data, but the whole data.
Dr. Carey, you can head up and ask questions.
All right, there's one, don't enroll it, I don't even know.
Okay. There are two charts where you're standing, you're only going to open one of them for the first three minutes, and the other one for the second three minutes. The easiest thing to do would be to look at the bottom chart first.
All right, we need two more volunteers back here. They go with Mike and Josh. The other group is back there. There's two groups back there, so if you want to split up behind the circulation. We need two groups back there, back there. There's two different groups. Ms. Banglan, do you want to come up there?
No.
Go over here. Go back there, Michelle, I need somebody.
Watch yourself.
No, come on. It's okay. That's the safe part. She can, she can guide you through it, which is still really good thing to record.
Okay, come on. You guys can have your own chart.
So we want to get intros, want to read all the intros.
This one's the hardest one because it gets full of people. So yes, it has... So that's all you want to open now, okay? And you're going to spend three minutes reading the box, okay? Okay, the three minutes now. The three-minute timer has started. You have three minutes on the bottom chart. Is this working? Can you hear me?
Is there only three minutes?
No.
We had a group of three.
You had three minutes to the bottom chart, we're on two minutes, 30 seconds. Some on board up front, if you want to see, three minutes. Yes. This one, no. We're not doing this.
Which students success? We're learning to talk about, we're seeing, seeing. So we can refer, we can use a word, we'll see outside of China. Here, progressives. Should the big question be based on standard?
We're drawing a bar here, so we're changing. Yeah, so we're seeing that. We lost all these rates that are, that are good. So we're seeing.
Were there already changes?
I'm saying, I know.
She knows what's happening. Key pieces, and you're missing, you know, the question we understood. So what's the timeline? Are you certain?
Thirty seconds.
I usually got, I'm not sure, five minutes. Five minutes. Which is being, yeah. Sure. As you mentioned earlier. Yeah, middle school, not middle school. Which is two minutes. Middle school special. Actually, I'm not first yet. It's actually, it's getting a year.
Okay, that is three minutes, so we're ready to look at the second chart here. Hold down your other chart, three minutes, and begin.
Subject matter. Such as, problems, but other things. They have the essence of what we're trying to work as a graduation.
Ms. Banglan, top chart. Yes. Yes, great. So let's look at the A L I.
Elementary, students still not really successful in the next series. Middle school, where they started. I want for the teachers and parents.
So, so, okay, that's a really helpful.
Not required. Right. The reception. Right, the reception. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good, good, good. Good change. Right, with them. Everyone has to, because right that's.
But you notice that in any part of these, you're at the dark range. I don't know. Yeah. It's crazy, I mean, it's all. Except in our technology. Because this is where they each, you see.
Your childhood.
This is still, this is the best, I don't know, fourth grade. Three years. Like, because my son, he was like...
Yeah.
Twenty-five seconds. How's it going up here? We're ready to figure out what's strange about these tests. Because we have two different tests, we did the eighth graders in mathematics, Algebra I, and regular grades. The 99% of the students who are on the screen are taking Algebra I and grade 11. However, if we pull them out, we only got the circle to the left of that was the regular grade, or the grade 11 for tennis, which is 50%. So I weighted the two averages together by number of students in each, and it gives us 60% of the scores. Which is still way less.
Sure.
Okay, finding out all this data. Now, can everyone hear me? Okay? Now we've got two minutes to talk about what you wonder about, what do you wonder now? What are your questions that you wonder about having looked at this data at some point? What are the questions you wonder?
Chris is like, I've cut it up for you. So now to say, what do you wonder?
Sure. So why shouldn't I? Especially with, you know, how impressed as far with what we've seen. Last year, I mean, it's, 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 it's,
...... However, it had fallen out because we got the circle to the left of that was the regular or the three ultimate test, which is fifty percent. So I weighted the two averages together by number of students in each and it's sixty percent. Which is still way less than.
Sure.
Okay, finding that all this data. Now, can everyone hear me? Okay, now we've got two minutes to talk about what you wonder about the, what do you want to know? Now, what are your questions that you wonder about having looked at this data at some point? What questions do you want to ask?
Chris is like, I've cut it up for you.
Okay, so wondering is up. Do you like to do that? Do you want to? Okay, so wondering is up. Thank you. Do you like to do that? Do you want to? Okay, come on everybody. This is okay? You guys, you guys. Mrs. Shaw? Is everybody looking?
There was a lot of good conversation.
As you can see, that is just the thing, you know, what you're doing to get them started. Obviously, the people did a lot more data for a lot more time than we have. This is just a little smattering, you can see what kinds of things they're starting to do in schools. And based on what you see, I would think you would have questions. Now, for our conclusions, yes, have the questions about why this, why that, whatever. And then we did more dealt, we delved more deeply into other data that helps to answer those questions, specifically about the vomit tests and so on and so forth. And when you looked at the district data, the data they look at is for their building and their classes in that school, which might be somewhat different than the districts are there. So obviously, okay, if we're going to make a difference, we have to go down several. Okay, any comments anybody would like to make? We're running overtime quite a bit at this point. Any questions anybody would like, or any comments, anything you wondered that you would like to share? Feel free. Wasn't that bad, was it? Mrs. Figgis?
No, there were a lot of good questions. Um, I think, I think the overarching theme was, um, in terms of wondering and, um, you know, looking at assessments, the results, is it indicative of, again, to Mr. Little's point, like, what do other districts look like? You know, we don't have access to that, unfortunately. We only get access to our own district. Um, but we do compare ourselves to those state means, um, and that is what we are getting. Um, I think a lot of emphasis and discussion on our side over here was, you know, at the high school where you don't see as much, um, success with the standards, you know, we were wondering what's the reason for that? You know, um, and we were wondering, did we have good participation at elementary and middle school? Um, so there was some really good questions, and that's the kind of questions that teachers are now asking. And then they'll go back and look at those individual class and student reports to tease out, was that really indicative of, of your actual capacity, learning capacity? Or was there a lack of effort put in? Because when I compare this NJ, NJ SLA piece of data, it doesn't match up to all the other data points we have collected for you last year. You know, your, your Fontis and Penelope's learning records, your math quarterlies, um, your Lincoln exams. So sometimes it's motivational, you know, making that personal connection with students. You know, one of the things that we wondered actually over in our corner was, gee, there seems to be such a big disparity, right, between elementary, middle, and high. How are the tests administered in high school? They're not with their own teachers. Because a teacher can't administer an exam to six classes worth of students in one day. So, you know, at middle, middle and elementary, they're with their teacher. And how do you look at your teacher and not put effort in after they've worked so hard with you all year? So, you know, just things like that, we were wondering, does that have an influence on outcomes at the high school level? You know, so really it's fun to have to talk to students too, and find, and getting information from them.
With the HIB exams, they're not even allowed to have their teacher in the room during testing.
Yeah. One thing, as we were looking at, I think we came up with the same kind of conclusion, that it seems like there's potentially a lack of motivation at the high school level, especially in certain areas. And I'm wondering if it might be an opportunity to ask a qualitative question of the kids at the time they take the test. How much do you care about how you perform on this test? To try to then match, are the kids who are underperforming also the kids who self-report they don't care? And are the kids who are doing well the ones who self-report they do care? Because I think it might help you at least just have one more data point to tease apart the population. Yeah. And a lot of our schools are, especially the principals we've already met with, um, who have come to talk to give us feedback about the discussions going on back in their schools with their learning design teams and with their full faculties, they are asking those more qualitative types of questions. You know, looking at students holistically, not just as, at their academic profiles, but what about, you know, other parts of their profiles? What about other data? You know, um, home life, um, access to assistance outside of school, um, uh, you know, other pieces of their demographics? You know, and are there connections between scores and, and those types of qualitative measures? And what can we do to support those students? Because that is important, you know, we have to educate the whole child. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you for participation.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for participating.
So beginning here everyone, I want to apologize that we have to sit for another presentation on this evening, but this is required by the state to present, and it is important information. Um, so Ms. Walker and myself are going to go through, uh, results of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment, which each school is required to do annually. And then also the results of our, yeah, student safety data system, our management system. So we're going to do a little bit of comparative between eighteen nineteen school year and seventeen eighteen school year. So every year, like I said, um, each school, elementary, middle, and high school has to go through the required by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights to conduct, uh, self-assessment. That self-assessment is conducted by the school, the building, um, school safety. So it consists of the anti-bullying specialist, an administrator in the building, parents, teachers, and volunteers. Sit together, they go through, it's a thirty-six page document. Um, there's eight core elements that are listed up there, and each element has a number of different indicators that they have to go through and they have to score themselves on. Uh, and the core elements, as you can see, it ranges from everything, from programs, so what the school is doing, um, to educating the children, how are they educating the staff, how are they educating parents? Are the procedures in place? Have they appointed the appropriate personnel? Does every school have an anti-bullying specialist? Uh, are the investigations completed in a timely manner, and up to date as far as all the time, uh, timetables the state puts out? So those are some of the eight, or those are the eight, uh, core elements that they go through during the, uh, self-assessment. This is important. So each element, or rather, each indicator is given a grade, a zero, one, two, or three. Two says they do everything that meets the, uh, the requirements of the state in the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. If you look up there, if they, if each school, uh, determined that they have a two for every indicator, their final score will be a fifty-two. And if they get threes, obviously that means that they're exceeding the requirements, exceeding the expectations. But remember that a two is an indicator that they met everything that's required by the state as far as the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. The maximum grade you can get is a seventy-eight, that will get a three on the indicator. So the next slide shows our school's grades for the last year, eighteen nineteen school year. Um, so every school up there well exceeded the minimum of the fifty-two. Some schools, uh, got close to the maximum score, um, when everybody was well over that score of fifty-two, they met every requirement for each year. Another part of it, uh, that we have to report as a district, and each school goes through and, uh, puts their own number of trainings and programs in place for the school year. So last year, September first through June thirtieth, uh, as a district, we did seven hundred and nineteen trainings on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights for HIB. Um, that included all of our substitute teachers, all of our teachers, custodians, outside contractors of Y M C A, um, for aftercare, we go out, paraprofessionals, all the support staff, everybody that has been, uh, been trained, that also includes parent volunteers. So throughout the district last year, we did seven hundred and nineteen trainings, and there were a hundred and eighteen-nine programs implemented into the district. So the difference between training and programs training is actually focused right on HIB, how to identify, how to, uh, report, and the procedures. Programs are more preventative, so it's more than a one-time thing. So that's the respect, uh, respect, um, school violence awareness week, those types of things would be considered programs that are one in one time.
Is this on the portal?
No, we'll put it on there when we're, we're done today. Okay? Yeah, I'm gonna ask you. It's not on here.
This is just a quick definition of the New Jersey Anti-Bullying Law. Um, a lot of people think, or they, they understand bullying one way, but the way the state defines it is much different than what we hear on the news and what people think bullying is. So anytime there's a report of, of bullying to a school, we conduct the investigation. It's up to the anti-bullying specialist in the school to determine if it meets the criteria as far as what, uh, New Jersey considers a bullying incident. There's really too many, I'm not going to go through every this, but there's too many things. One, it has to be based on a perceived characteristic, so actual or perceived characteristic, I should say. And two, it has to cause a substantial disruption in the building. All right, so one, one thing to remember is if two students have an incident, and, you know, they used to sit next to each other at lunch, they have an incident, and the next day they're sitting back together at lunch, that doesn't necessarily always constitute a substantial disruption. If they have an incident, and all of a sudden this child now moves to the other side of the table or other side of the room because they don't want to sit next to their, what was their friend one time, then that could be considered a substantial disruption. So those are just two key points to remember when talking about HIB. Comparison of the HIB incidents last year from the previous year, so in seventeen eighteen, we had forty-two confirmed HIBs. Last year we had fifty-eight, um, alleged HIBs, we had a hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, in seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, we had two hundred and seventeen.
And alleged is investigations.
Right. So we had two hundred and seventeen investigations, fifty-eight of them were confirmed HIBs. Um, obviously there's an increase of both, if you do the quick math, the percentage is exactly the same as far as, believe it or not, is exactly the same, um, as far as the number of confirmed HIBs to allegations. And this is the other piece we're talking about, the student safety data system recording. So every time that a student is removed from school, we need to report it to the state. Um, so they list violence, vandalism, substance, and weapons as, uh, four categories that we report out on, that we also have to report out every time a student is suspended, is suspended from school or removed from school. That's what listed, is listed as the other incidents. So if it's not violence, vandalism, substance, or weapons, then it's another incident. So if you look at this, the other incidents, rather, I'm sorry, um, last year we had two hundred and eighty, the previous year we had three hundred and forty-eight. So if you total all those numbers up from eighteen nineteen, total them up in seventeen eighteen, there's actually a ten percent decrease in the amount of times students miss instructions from those two school years. So, um, we're really, that's something that all the elementary, middle, and high school has really focused on, looking at that social emotional learning. Miss Figgis was talking already about responsive classroom, we're looking to, um, implement some things at a base school level for intervention pieces to try to continue to decrease that number from twenty to eighty from last year to be a lesser number this year.
All right, so we have all these, you know, incidents every year, you know, students misbehave, students make mistakes. Uh, but how do we support students to improve our school climate, to improve their behavior? Um, so I'm just going to go through some of the things we have put in place in the school, and we had, we're, we're moving forward with additional stuff this year, so just to, you know, give you a good idea. Um, as far as our personnel that we have that supports our students' social, emotional wellbeing, all of our elementary schools now have their own S B S Ss full-time, that's new this year. Um, we have three guidance counselors at Thorn and Bayshore and four at Thompson, their population is larger than Thorn and Thompson. Uh, six and a half guidance counselors at each high school. Each, um, middle school and high school has a SAC. We have nineteen nurses, we also have school psychologists and social workers that, um, you know, provide support to the, our special education community. Um, we have outside counselors, uh, from CPC, um, that are working in our high schools and middle schools, doing groups and, uh, some individual, but mostly group counseling with our students. Um, we also have E S S therapeutic services at both high schools who work with students, and there's actually special programs for students who, um, are generally, um, more like, uh, students that don't want to come to school, attendance issues, social issues. Uh, and that's been a very, very successful program for us, um, keeping a lot of schools' students in school, getting them to come to school, approving their attendance. We also, this year, have Y M C A counseling at all our district schools. We had it in eight of our schools last year, and this was extended, you know, extended to all our schools this year. We're still working through getting all the licensing done in some of our schools, so it's not up and running in every school, but it will be within a month, uh, or so, as soon as we get all those licenses done. Um, all right, uh, what do our SACs do? SACs are student assistance counselors, and what they do is they will do individual counseling with students, um, they do group counseling, they do things like, uh, groups for children of substance abusers and, um, for at-risk students, we have the positive psychology group here at, uh, High School North. Um, when a student is sent out for, uh, substance abuse, that, you know, reason to suspect they went out, um, when they come back in, they do an assessment, a re-entry meeting, and they assess, and they determine what type of treatment, whether the student should go out to, outside counselors, that type of thing. They also work on prevention, they do presentations, they do classroom lessons, and they do staff training. So they're very important in our buildings. Uh, programs, our health program, we have, um, lessons on, you know, the positive choices, how to make good choices, we actually have on vaping and substance abuse, and it's all developmentally appropriate at every age level. The Middletown Police come in and do the LEAD program also, which is based on good decision-making skills and substance use and vaping, um, that's to all fifth graders. The Municipal Alliance also works with fifth graders, they do Project Plus, which is a six-week, uh, program that's after school for all of our fifth graders. They also do a one-day reaching-out program where in the past it was at night, and it was getting to the point where it was not very well-attended. So this year, we brought it into the schools during the daytime. We did our first program for half of our fifth graders last Friday. It was a very powerful, full presentation, we got very good reviews, uh, I watched it, it was really a good message for our students. We're doing the other half this Friday, it's in Health at High School South. Uh, we've also had students from their school over, um, and then they have lunch during the middle of it, it was really a nice program. We also have Project Insight, which is from CPC, they're our counselors, our outside counselors, that they do a special project, uh, and that is starting this year in, uh, on substance, uh, abuse prevention, but it's at specific students it's going to target. And then also, we're going to have a program called Not Even Once. It's an opioid program, it's ten lessons, it's not ten weeks, but it's ten lessons, and police officers come in and do this program, they're speakers, it's, it's really, I, I saw, I had a training, um, down in, I think it was Manchester in South Jersey, and they went through the whole program, and it looks like a really great program for our seniors. So that will come into our buildings for the third marking period for our seniors this year, and that's, uh, in conjunction with the Middletown Police. They, they really get involved with our students, the police, it's very nice. Um, we also have a lot of programs during the year for our students and parents that focus on specific, um, you know, things like vaping, uh, opioids, we just had a, um, an opioid, um, prevention program for athletes, um, one here at North and one, one at South and their parents. Um, Nikki Francis from Wellspring, she does a great presentation on social media, and that's a big thing to, social media, which really impacts our HIV, uh, numbers, because that really is an impetus for a lot of, um, HIB that goes back and forth. Because HIB is not only what happens in the school, it's what happens anywhere, at any time. During the summer, when a student's on vacation, California, it doesn't matter, if it's HIB, it's something that we deal with here in school, and we report it to the state. So it happens on social media, it's, it's, you know, it's important that we deal with that. Um, and here are just some of the other ones that are, are being done, um, I don't know if I can read everything for you, um, we'll go to the next one. Um, and then we also have our leadership, uh, peer leadership groups, which are really great. Our heroes and cool kids and bottle capers are high school kids that go out and do lessons at the middle and high school level, and, um, you know, they really make an impact on the students, because, you know, they're just the big kids that they look up to, telling them how to make, you know, good decisions and, you know, what the dangers are of social media, that type of thing. Um, and then we also have other peer leaders, uh, transition product, project, civic leaders, and even at the middle school, and choose to be nice as an elementary program. Um, we already talked about the responsive classroom, we have our Lifeline Suicide Prevention Program, which was just expanded to the fifth, sixth, ninth, and eleventh, and twelfth grades, we had it, I believe it was only in the sixth and the ninth last year. Um, mindfulness practices, the PASC program from the Mental Health Association helps with attendance, it was very positive last year, so we're going into year two with that, and that's at the high school. Our alternate school intervention program, it's, um, a program, instead of having students suspended out, they, it's like in-school suspension, but there is a, a portion of that, that we work on restorative practices and counseling during that, um, that time that the students are here, so hopefully they won't be repeat offenders. Um, and then, uh, the social justice, the school-based health diversion program from the Junior Justice Commission, those are students that are, are getting into, uh, you know, problems that could end up with the, with the law, so we get them involved in that program, instead of getting involved in the court system. Um, we also have a mental health board that helps with training, um, for our staff and, uh, on all different things, you know, uh, psychological, first aid, trauma, that type of thing, mental trauma. And what else we have, is that it? Oh, and our parent programs, we have a lot of parent programs also, um, you know, the, the one example is vaping, like, we, we've been really dealing with vaping for a while, and we knew that it was dangerous, I, I don't think anybody knew it was as dangerous as it all has come out to be this summer. We've been trying to educate our students and our parents, and it has been a problem in the schools, but with all the publicity this summer of, you know, the real dangers, what was happening to kids and, and actually adults, there has been a really, you know, a reduction in, in vaping that we've seen in the first couple of weeks of the school year. So, you mean, just getting the message out to the parents, we tried, the news media did a much better job than we did, but that's why we keep trying to get these messages out to parents, because they really are the biggest influencers on the students' behavior, so.
And I just wanted to add, I was trying to get through that as a special, again, I think something really important, and, uh, Ms. Walker just spoke about it, when we look at those reports of the S S D S, and there was an increase with our substance abuse numbers from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen, there's definitely a correlation between the increase of vaping at the high school level, even middle school, and unfortunately even, you know, a few circumstances in the, in the elementary school. But the vaping epidemic was out of control last year. Um, we were getting phone calls almost every day, students forgot vaping in the bathrooms, and unfortunately, they weren't just vaping, you know, nicotine, they had the THC cartridges in them as well. So that's why there was an uptick in the substance abuse in the S S D S reporting. So I just wanted to make a point, if you see this, you know, online, and you wondered why there was such an uptick in the, in the substance, that's why.
Yeah, we, we tested more kids because we found them in possession of, of these little vials, so, um, that caused an increase. And one of the things we're looking at right now, we're working with the, um, the SACs to look at our policy for substance, uh, abuse, um, we're looking at maybe making some changes to how we do things, um, the method of testing and some of our procedures, it hasn't been changed in a while, so we thought it was time, so there's been some new developments in testing and stuff like that, so we're doing some research, we're looking at our policy, so we may have some recommendations in the next month or two for the board to look at in terms of policies of substance abuse, because it was something that we saw an increase last year, and we're hoping it decreases this year with the reduction in, that we've seen so far in vaping, uh, but we are going to look at that policy, but that was really important. Um, and, you know, our code of conduct is, is really just like a last resort, I mean, that's after the fact, we really want to do prevention, we don't want to, you know, punishment, we all know that, that's probably the least effective means of preventing something, but it is one of the tools that we have. And these are just some of the partners that we partner with for, uh, our social emotional support of our students. All right, and that's about it. Do we have any questions right there? Comments?
I, I have a comment. I, I know you say that the amount of vaping has dropped, but I don't want the public to get the perception that it's getting better, because it really isn't getting better, it's only been a few weeks of school, and we haven't seen it as much, and that's a good thing, but I don't want everybody to let their guard down thinking, hey, you know, this, this is coming to a close, everybody's getting it, we still need to get that word out, because it's not.
No, because you know what, we, we now have students that are addicted to nicotine, so is, you know, suspended out, they, it's like in-school suspension, but there is a portion of that that we work on restorative practices and counseling during that time that the students are here, so hopefully they won't be repeat offenders. And then the social justice, the school-based health diversion program from the Junior Justice Commission. Those are students that are getting into, you know, problems that could end up with the law, so we get them involved in that program instead of getting involved in the court system. We also have a mental health board that helps with training for our staff and on all different things, you know, psychological, first aid, trauma, that type of thing, mental trauma. And what else do we have? Is that it? Oh, and our parent programs. We have a lot of parent programs also. You know, the one example is vaping. Like, we've been really dealing with vaping for a while, and we knew that it was dangerous. I don't think anybody knew it was as dangerous as it all has come out to be this summer. We've been trying to educate our students and our parents, and it has been a problem in the schools, but with all the publicity this summer of, you know, the real dangers, what was happening to kids and actually adults, there has been a really, you know, a reduction in vaping that we've seen in the first couple of weeks of the school year. So, you mean, just getting the message out to the parents. We tried. The news media did a much better job than we did, but that's why we keep trying to get these messages out to parents, because they really are the biggest influencers on the students' behavior, so.
And I just want to add, I was trying to get through that aspect, but again, I think something really important, and Ms. Walker just spoke about it. When we look at those reports of the SSDS, and there was an increase with our substance abuse numbers from 1718 to 1819. There's definitely a correlation between the increase of vaping at the high school level, even middle school, and unfortunately, even, you know, a few circumstances in the elementary school. But the vaping epidemic was out of control last year. We were getting phone calls almost every day, students forgot vaping in the bathrooms. And unfortunately, they weren't just vaping, you know, nicotine, they had THC cartridges in them as well. So that's why there was an uptick in the substance abuse in the SSDS report. So I just wanted to make a point. If you see this, you know, online, and you wonder why there was such an uptick in the substance, that's why.
Yeah, we tested more kids because we found them in possession of these little vials, so that caused an increase. And one of the things we're looking at right now, we're working with the SACS, to look at our policy for substance abuse. We're looking at maybe making some changes to how we do things, the method of testing, and some of our procedures. It hasn't been changed in a while, so we thought it was time. So there's been some new developments in testing and stuff like that, so we're doing some research, we're looking at our policy. So we may have some recommendations in the next month or two for the board to look at in terms of policies of substance abuse, because it was something that we saw an increase last year, and we're hoping it decreases this year with the reduction that we've seen so far in vaping, but we are going to look at that policy, but that was really important. And, you know, our code of conduct is really just like a last resort. I mean, that's after the fact. We really want to do prevention. We don't want to, you know, punishment. We all know that. That's probably the least effective means of preventing something, but it is one of the tools that we have. And these are just some of the partners that we partner with for our social-emotional support of our students. All right, and that's about it. Do we have any questions right there? Comments?
I have a comment. I know you say that the amount of vaping has dropped, but I don't want the public to get the perception that it's getting better, because it really isn't getting better. It's only been a few weeks of school, and we haven't seen it as much, and that's a good thing. But I don't want everybody to let their guard down, thinking, hey, you know, this is coming to a close, everybody's getting it. We still need to get that word out, because it's not getting better.
No, because you know what? We now have students that are addicted to nicotine, so it's, you know, it's a problem, whether the parents are on them or not. We have seen a reduction, we hope we continue to see that reduction. But Joan's right. We have to keep our guard up. It's not, it's not over. Just like the opioid epidemic. We heard about the opioid epidemic, like, probably like two years ago. There's still an opioid epidemic. People are still dying. I was talking to the, he's the director of Homeland Security for Monmouth County, and he's instrumental in helping us in the Middletown Police Department bring that Not Even Once program, and, which is opioids. And he's like, we, of course, Monmouth County are still using Narcan, you know, they're giving out Narcan to the same amount of people. Like, it's not going down. It's still out there. It's just other things have gotten in the news. So it's something that we're still working on. That's why we had our athletes in opioid presentation. We're not going to let our guard down on vaping or marijuana. We're going to continue to fight it all on fronts. All right. Anything else? Yes?
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
The Not Even Once program, I'm just wondering if third marking period senior year is too late?
You know what it is? It has to be in the health classes, and that's when the seniors get help.
So it can be pushed to, like, 10th or 11th grade?
Well, it can't be, it can't be in 10th grade. It cannot be in 10th grade, because that's when we have driver's ed, and we have to have. 11th grade is possible, but I think 11th grade is the last marking period. So this year, we're going to put it into 12. We actually can, you know, change it. It's a curriculum that could be, it's actually a state-approved curriculum, so there is one for 9th grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. When we went to the training, the training was for 12th grade, because the idea was, that was the first curriculum that was created. This is our last effort to get these students before they get out to college. And opioids seems to be something that happens after high school. I'm not saying it doesn't happen in high school, but you see it more in students' 20s, in college, and even, like, a lot of the, unfortunately, the people dying for it are in their 30s. So if we can get them that one last shot before they get out, we thought that would be good. But it's not like we're going to do that every year. We're going to take a look at, after we did it, how did it go? Maybe we can do it in two grades, you know, because it's a different curriculum for each grade.
If you just move on to facilities and finance, because we have to open up the mic to comments on the presentations. So if you just move on to facilities and finance, and then we'll go back to the comments.
I'll go, I'll look at, we got, on September 18th, I'll let Ms. Gallagher do the agenda items that was here. We have quite a few topics, actually, on the 18th, that's my voice. First one was Middletown High School South parking update. There is a, I guess the plan has already been activated, where parking spots, student parking, are being added along the side of the building. It's going to be, we're able to obtain some millions, like, the town has sort of equipment, and I guess we've donated a million service for a break. So we've basically been able to add quite a few, I think it's 170 parking spaces, so along the side of the building, so you'll see it on the far side by the level. You'll probably see it now, probably the folks that are right on this will see that. The total amount of parking spaces for students will be increased to 323. The current need for this year is 308, and I don't know if this is a reminder of people already aware, but the issue came, nobody parks in the park, Green Acres money. The township, as I said, they were going to warn students, parking, I guess warning ticket or threatened to take it or something like that. I mean, that's been probably decades of back and forth with the township, and township says it's not going to be under their control. So the township will help, and South will have increased parking spaces for this year. I guess, I don't know if I have a completion date, but I think it's going to be done fairly soon. I think we have enough of the pavements, just that million parking service for the present town.
I went by last Friday, and just drove back there, and as of last Friday, where the million service was down, it was laid out, we pressed, we tried to get a roller back there, we pressed it down a little bit, but it was drivable all the way down.
Yeah, and they're going to get, like, the little pump or anything, which is going to cost us a few bucks, probably about $30. You know, so you have, like, real spots, so it's going to become a mess where you have to fit your cars in there. So they'll be legitimate spots with two hundred members, and I guess those people that, the two of the folks that work in this town, the parking areas.
And you follow Walter Cahill on Twitter. You can see all the pictures of projects that now come along for your information. So just follow Walter Cahill.
Yeah, I feel, I mentioned, I've seen the finance facilities, so if you're Cahill, part of the facilities department, and the Twitter feed is actually pretty interesting. You can see a lot of stuff compared to the old school in the summer. The next topic, the high school portfolio here, you can see that in the picture, but it's actually nice to see it, you know, because you know it's being done, and you actually see the work, and the first time you go around and drive a car around town, it's actually great. He does a great job. So the next thing is the high school north portfolio here. Lighting and sound was put in. The sound system has not been completed until, I actually destroyed direct commission, that needs fully used. So lighting's in place yet. So I think you're supposed to know, we spent quite a bit of money on that, to, to, you know, the lighting and sound and all the scenery and all things like that, so look forward to hearing that.
Exactly. Training and lighting.
Yeah. We also had a report that we had, I guess, a consulting firm, Advocate, who was on our facilities department, that was the findings and recommendations we reviewed in this committee, with the Cahill, Dr. George, Gallagher, and I think the board members. That's how the, those recommendations are being announced, so that's forward for consideration. Now, I guess, if you want to come on that, towards the different pieces of information that we see, I'll talk to you later.
And there's kind of a major review of the program.
Right, I didn't want to get into the, I think that there's a certain thing that were, I come home, I'm, facilities, increased efficiencies, and some of the other items, more walls, and also a lot of interconnection. It's not like a buffet, sort of like, you sort of have to be able to take and sort of take that, so I, I see that, because I'm not sure where that came out. Next, we had a synergistic energy savings program. A company that comes in and they have a system that they set up, and they, they look at, oh, how efficient are you with your energy savings, you know, are you using your lights and heating, using efficiently? The idea being they baseline your district, and they say, okay, here's the level that you're at. You know, we're going to try to get you lower than that, and you kind of share in terms of your savings and anything like that. It also came in, like, seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars a year for their system. The committee felt that, you know, we just did this decent program where we put all panels on the roof, you know, we have LEDs, all that stuff. So theoretically, our costs are coming down, so it's really hard to baseline, even though this company said they could do that. We had to be, our recommendation from the committee was wait another year, let that all sort of settle out, see where we are, and see if the company can add to that. You know, I believe they do this work from other districts, and they save money, like a three-year contract or something like that, so our recommendation was wait a year.
Yeah, I think it was, I think actually it was six months, I think we were going to wait and see if the, if the.
Wait till next, yeah. Wait till next, wait till next year.
Yeah, twenty months.
Is this on the board, the board is synergistic?
That's, that's.
Okay. I just want to make sure the whole board knows what we're talking about, that's the thing. The presentation. Okay. Does anyone from the board have any, want to add a discussion on that synergistic? If not, you know, I think we should take the committee's recommendation, whole office as well.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement, you guys, we do revisit any of our, any of our.
Oh, so you did, you have some.
Yeah, no, it was just, yeah.
Well, you did a nice, exciting discussion.
Yes, it's fun.
We'll wait till next, we'll wait till next year, unless someone reads a document, writing our.
Yeah, with the finding that you sold, you didn't have to make that at the beginning.
Yeah. Having gotten some really exciting stuff, preliminary, 6:30, order information, yeah, that you see, that thing. There are no administrative findings in our cap report, which is the annual report. I don't know if folks look at that, but that's, they have disclosures. You know, if you ever had a chance, you go on the website, it's C A R, looking a lot about the district, all the charts and stuff in the background, it's interesting. We have an unassigned fund balance, it increased approximately $348,000 over the last year, and the district was able to replenish its capital reserve to an amount of $1.1 million. The summary of the district's fund balance for students, basically, we had money in the budget, one in the capital reserve, I don't know if folks remember, the capital reserve was basically zero, so now it's at $1.12 million. Then what we did was, other fun stuff, and sort of related to digital finances more than obviously these items, a lot of finance, I think, of the portion of the committee. We reviewed and discussed high-level five-year budget projections. I don't think anyone is, I think most folks realize that state data is being reduced over the last few years. So without factoring in any capital or five-year commitments, I mean, that flat, it was projected that the district's annual shortfall in revenue and expenses would be approximately $2.4 million in 2021 year, an increase of approximately $9.4 million per year by 2024, 2025, that's the final year of the state P reductions under S2. And I was assuming, with the revenue amendment, that we approved 2% taxes, a 2% increase in our budget. So with that, you know, and it helped, helped efforts to keep it safe, or like, there's like legal adjustments to it, but we know that can be very, 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 very significant for these various other things, not spending money on capital, pensions on buildings is not realistic, but that $9.4 million in that five, in the five years, shows us where our shortfall will be. This is an item that the administration's working on, this report, that includes some of the profile information for the strategic planning, just to show you what our path looks like. You know, obviously, there's things in trains, you know, talking about various things, I've talked about facility efficiency, you know, the work, talking about synergistic, so the various things going on, and at some point, you know, you have to figure out what puts this path up there. And at high level, estimates, you know, things can change, but we don't state, like, a lot of, you know, that.
I just want to add something to that. I think it's important for the, for the whole board and the public to understand that that number, the numbers that Mr. Little talked about, the 2.2 million next year, projected out to 9. something, again, you know, four or five years out, is the baseline for all of our discussions around strategic planning, around capital improvement, around, you know, resourcing, around everything that we look at. You know, we made a commitment to, as a board, to turn over every stone, to try to bring that number down, to get us to a, to a, to a level par rather than a deficit. But it's important to remember, and we've sort of been an offhand comment, that we want to put those numbers behind us at every meeting to say, this is our starting point, to circle, to get that to zero. Not 2.2 and hold zero, if not something positive, but we have to, you know, every time we discuss anything, it's with an eye on, okay, well, this is, this is a good idea, but what about 9.9 million? But 9. something run down five years down, or it can be a hole. So it's just, you know, it's something, I think, you know, a lot of the folks here are here all the time, so they hear this all the time, but this is something that the board members think about at every meeting, at every discussion, you know, how does this contribute to the overall financial outcome of the district? And then how does that impact education for our students?
And also to, we're not ready to generate a new change, so it's, it's just a high-level , it's like that. Even if you look at a, any sort of margin of error, getting to flat, the zero's still a wide margin there. And again, you can play health efforts, which we also look into, which you bear, right, because based on history, I mean, you know, I think hopefully a lot of folks went to our budgeting, our three days of budgeting discussions, and heard some of these, you know, sometimes heated, but very intense sort of discussions, and can see the kind of things we consider. But hopefully we can just, you know, look at this a little bit more, find it, and get it out there for the October, October meetings. And finally, we talked about new residential developments. We, we looked at some of the old information that we had, fairly, fairly, it's all told-ish information on, about the students that were estimated to be generated from these developments, you know, and where they're supposed to be going to school. We talked about things about, you know, Goshenup, for example, we talked about there's two, Taylor Lane, over that's over across the street from Target, I shouldn't say it's across Highway 35, Target. One's a monthly family with affordable housing in it, the other one did about 20 detached homes, simple family homes, that I believe will be currently going to be about Village District, which is its own, which is elementary school. I'm calling it Taylor Lane Developments, and talking about spot zoning. The committee didn't really have a recommendation, you know, economy came out as different to us. Yeah, it wasn't divided, just that there was no real pegs.
We were divided. Usually, we would divide.
The answer was for the, for us, what we got different views of what people think is spot zoning, and why you moved that school to some, or those developed to another place, what's the evidence for that, what kind of data are you looking at? Like, originally, the projection for the multiple scanners to 35, you know, it was down to 100. I don't know, I don't believe it's for the board to look at what the data is, what they think a potential concern is or not, and see what they want to do. I, it's going to be under old business, I don't know.
We can discuss it under old business.
I, remember, I didn't.
Well, no, that maybe we can get around agenda with you to do, because it's something that's happened, they're building, they're building, people are buying, they should know, when they buy the homes, you call up, you go to bed, and then ask where we're going to school. They need to know.
Well, currently, they are zoned, I guess, it's not like very large space.
No, they are zoned.
You're surrounded by other people who live down the building.
The board was going to change something.
Well, we don't have inside of it, right?
That's why I said, we discussed it.
Yeah, I'm indifferent, it was an agenda item, but I didn't see it on the agenda that much.
It's not on the agenda, but we could bring it up under old business. I, you know, I don't know that we can take any action at this point in the meeting.
And I think, you know, just to summarize the discussion, as part of the committee report, the, the general feeling was, there were two options, as it couldn't come to a consensus, and we, and we talked through these options, you know, very thoroughly. The first option would be to leave the zoning where it is, right? As John said, you know, there is a right now for the Middle Town Village. You know, the other option.
Village Thompson North.
Right. And the other, the other option would be to look at one or all three of those sending zones, to say, for example, maybe they go to Harmony rather than go to Middletown Village, or maybe they go to Middletown Village, then there's a board. And again, looking at the possible impact to the attendance at our middle schools, whether there's a, if there were an issue with attendance at maybe those particular grade schools. The other hand of the argument was that because we have strategic planning going on right now, because the whole management and the boundary lines are part of the questionnaire that we circulated, the other, the other thought was, the houses are where the houses are, the districting is what the districting is, and if we're going to take approach, maybe we take a holistic approach and just count these houses in with the rest of the plant. So that's where we were. Those were basically the two sides. Do we make change, or do we let it ride right now and handle it with strategic planning? And as Mrs. Cavendish said, we were two to two.
You could, in the interim, adjust just that one area that doesn't affect any children that are in the school system already, it's just that one area that would be Taylor Lane. Those new students, anyone who went in there, you could move them to a school that's 1.6 miles away, as opposed to a school that's four miles away. And the school 1.6 miles away has room in it, and the school four miles away doesn't have any room in it. And to me, that just made sense to me, the facts just laid out, it's simple to me.
If I may, just from a procedural standpoint, as the question was asked, right now, we are at the U.S. Board, or at the Committee Report section of your agenda, which is what you're doing. It may be more appropriate to have a discussion on a potential motion and/or more pro-flex discussion on the overarching issue on your old business section of the agenda.
But then you have the authority.
Well, you can still, this is a regularly advertised meeting, so you can vote on other items as they come up. If it comes up tonight, all I'm saying is that right now, you're in the Committee Report section.
So you can still vote.
Yes. You can vote on whatever you want, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. If there's, we'll be actually.
Is that very clear, Pat? Yes, great. So. So, what do we have now? Sorry. Anything else for facilities, we have some action.
Oh, yes, Mrs. Kelly.
We have on the agenda for voting on the finance, we have the finance reports, we have the recent grant, we have the agreement, we have a contract of our solutions for public services, we have control transfer change in items for rats. We have an approval to participate in the end-to-end cooperative pricing system, and that's related to the purchase of the technology. And we also have a rejection of the challenge course bid. Again, you may remember this, if you've done this before, we put this out for a bid. This is the rebuilding and recertification of the course over High School South. And again, we only received one bid, it was over budget, and we will be rejecting that bid. We're also having, there was also a defect in the bid as well. So we are now looking at other courses of action. Now, we put this out for bid twice, and have not been successful on it, so we'll keep the board updated on how we are going to proceed with that. And on the agenda, there is a item for disposal of cafeteria equipment that is irrefutable as to its purchase to the state federal bonds through the food service operations. So we are putting that on the agenda for food disposal. And that covers those ingredients, finances, and facilities.
Every question on the bids that we can't get people to do, what happens? I mean, we can't really just have people do piecemeal on that because that's, it's a dangerous thing.
No, the problem is, we talked about this last meeting, with the new requirements from the state of New Jersey on these public works contractors to have a mentoring, an incentive or mentoring program, and some other things in place. There are very few companies out there who have all that in place that are qualified to bid on these projects. So again, we're looking at things like timeline, we're actively searching for the companies who aren't qualified with the state to build, who can use the significant bid. So we are doing our best to find qualified vendors and, but we have put it to bid twice, we have to do both the bids and over budget. So we're going to be able to propose this, this project. So we haven't got it, except maybe that again, we're going to have to keep the board updated.
So it almost seems like it's not going to happen this year.
We're still hoping that, well, we're still hoping that we can get it done, I mean, September, so we are, we're working on it, we'll update it for next month. It won't be done for the fall, but right now, we're going to strike.
All right, and we're going to move on to student activity.
We have a voting line, we have that animal between the district and the middle town police. There has been no change until after here, we really go to the training line last week, that was on animal way, because also some students are really good training. We have a research study on there, Mrs. Fox is going to be doing a research study towards her doctoral pieces, and that has to do with physician teachers, their attitudes towards, you know, school, and how it affects students' attitudes. And it's basically surveys that they're going to be doing. We do have the ICE rental and the rental for the YCA 20 on this agenda. There's a slight increase to the rate for practices and meets, but the actual, it's lower because we have less meets at both, so the cost is not, is going to be a little bit less than last year.
Can I ask you a question about the Middletown, the ICE World Agreement? I'm a hockey mom, and I get a lot of complaints that the JV team has to go practice at Howell Ice. Is there any way we can get them into Middletown? They travel to Howell, JV team.
I've got it all, I'm not sure.
People all go to Howell, and they, they're complaining to me. So I always told them, if it's on the agenda, I'll bring it up for you guys.
I'll check into it for you, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
We also have a visitor management system that we're going to be purchasing on the addendum. That was something that we started looking at this summer, we vetted out two companies. The company we chose, their system is not only a visitor management system, it's also a beautiful, re-unification system, if ever there was a reason that we had to evacuate and go to a reunification site. So it would all be done on Chromebooks, parents signing their students out, a very good system. We were actually going to put it on for next month, but the company offered us a $16,000 discount, because we did buy the 30th of this month, the end of the quarter, so we put it on for this month. Then an informational item that I handed out to you is the dashboard that we have set up with the YCA to kind of give us month-to-month updates of how things are going. And if you, if you look at the first column, which is our, you know, how many students are registered, their daily attendance, the attendance, and, you know, the registrants are up from last year. There is no waiting list this year, which is very good. We've been in ratio, 1 to 12, quality alone, they've had enough staff to staff for our needs. Most of the buildings are utilizing multiple spaces, they're breaking out. There's two buildings that we're going to be working with them on, now seeing the mom that they're having a little mess, so we'll converge on that. They'd be doing safety checks. Those safety checks is when their supervisors or their manager maps or your supervisor come out and check to make sure they're ratio, they're using their walk and talkies, that type of thing. Then they have had their monthly principal meetings with every principal, and some I know they've had multiple meetings with those principals. And then, well, the last column is the counseling that they're doing in all our different schools. So the first number is how many students, second number is actually how many sessions they had. So the first school they do has two students in counseling, but there's been a total of 14 sessions for those, total for those two students. As you can see, there's still a few schools that we've yet been running, we're working on the licensing, they need some things from us, then they have to, you know, they have to submit that to the state, and then, you know, then they'll be able to start. It's really very strict for counseling, what the rooms have to be and state licensing. So I think this is a much better place, I know this is a much better place we're in right now than we were at the manual last year, we're very pleased with it. There's still work we're dealing with then, hopefully next month, it will even be a better report, but...
This is wonderful.
Could we have a bad name to report? Could we have a list out actually, the number of staff, not just the ratio?
The number of staff?
Yep.
Sure. Okay, go ahead, we can always add column.
Yeah.
So the number of staff, I need to go in.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful, not, not that I don't believe them, but I love to, I love to see.
We do know that, and it's not reflected in here, but we do know that the state also came out and looked at a couple of buildings, they do that, they'll spot check during the year, and everything was fine, so.
All right, and could they also stop calling us the Middletown School District, please? It's two months, honestly. Can they really get it over?
I will ask them to change.
Please don't ask them, please tell them.
So are there any other metrics in terms of quality? To be exact, like, you have the right ratios, and you have a monthly meeting with the principal, and you take checks, but how do we know from this that we're happy for them? Is there any feedback, like, complaints, or any other kind of quality type of information?
Myself, or Mr. Reddella, and for Dr. George have not received any complaints from them at all.
Would they call you though, or they, would they call?
We're also, we were walking through yesterday, I was at the...
And we haven't received any principal's name. You don't need only, oh, I'm sorry, actually. I'm sorry.
At River Plaza, so we're doing our walk-throughs, we're having our communication with our principals, we are getting feedback, and we'll continue to do that with them. If there's any other metrics that you want us to look at?
And we do, we do talk to the principals. The only, the only issue that has been worth my attention is that they don't have a permanent supervisor at Nutswalk. There is somebody there that is designated as a supervisor, the supervisors are not included in this 1 to 12 ratio. So there's somebody that's always there, every day, that's a supervisor, but it's not the permanent supervisor, they've been, you know, were doing interviews, they're supposed to leave a seat, they were interviewing Ken, to find a supervisor. That is the only issue that I've heard at all from any person.
How did that have a permanent supervisor in the larger facility?
Because I think they're a little bit of a different person. There is, I mean, there is a supervisor, it's just the person that's not the media person.
I would hope they were prior to it.
Not going to fight you.
So that's what we're hoping for.
We need to talk to them about it. There's no way.
I have a question. I have a question. How long ago did we do anything yet with the scheduled uniforms that are being ordered?
Oh, yeah. Yes. We briefly sent this up. Yes. I'll put that in the portal.
Yes.
And then we can discuss it if you need any more information next month or next year.
Review and ask questions.
Any I got?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Carroll did put the details together.
Are we ordering made uniforms or anything, don't you know where?
I never saw made uniforms on there, but we've had all the other activities and sports broken now, so.
Well, so I gave you the list of what was ordered this year. Do you know whether a van was ordered or not to that, but then you asked for additional information, and that's what we're going to put on the, you know, additional information. I mean, I can put the original too, but I think that concluded in everything he sent us.
And then I'll go to that, and I'll...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing marching, I remember seeing golf shirts, certain things, but I don't remember marching.
The van, it's expensive, that's why I wanted to know.
I'm a van mom, I won't choose it.
And they don't get them every year, I mean, it's...
I know, but I don't remember the last time we ordered this.
Excuse me?
I can't remember the last time we ordered this, I haven't seen anything. So that's why I'm asking, because we used to have them on a cycle, but we don't do that.
Well, you would have to order replacements or additions if you needed that, but a full-scale replacement of the uniform style and so forth, that's, that's a different...
That's what you'd budget, I guess.
Yeah, I know, but they only last so long. Yeah.
Well, you can be on a replacement program where you're, you know, you're taking uniforms out that are, um, they're...
Did our van go down?
No, I take uniforms out that are worn out and do, you know, and keep replacing and adding sizes where you need it.
Incremental purposes. Okay, so we're going to put that information...
Okay, whatever, I just want to say what's going on with it, because I haven't heard anything about the uniforms. And it's not only the van, it's everything.
Right. Yeah, I understand, so we'll, we'll get those.
Okay, moving on to shared services.
We did not have a shared services meeting last month, so the only thing to report is that the township has, we've done survey activities at Nutswalk Turf Field, Grass Field, and at Northern Park, to, to have looking at their green acres grant, not green acres, that was green acres grants, some of the kind of grants, open space grants coming, to give more ad publicity, so more come on that. Otherwise, every open item that we had is still a little bit, and we tend to be better than we're going to.
I think the only other piece of information that I, we have received through communications with them is there have been questions about the timeline for the state route to school project, and the large grant. And if I remember correctly, the township said that maybe they have a meeting sometime in October to start getting the parameters of what that project is, but, you know, it is not at the point where it's going to any professionals or specs can develop, but maybe still have to have a meeting in October to get more details on what they, you know, before.
So let's make sure we put that on the October agenda as well, just to follow.
Was there any discussion on River Plaza parking lot going out to the side roads?
Not beyond what they'd already reported that on, and that they were going to go back and take a look at the plans on their end, because what they were originally looking at was beyond what the budget was that they were looking at, so they were going to go back with their engineer and rework, but we haven't received any of that.
And the principal had concerns about the route going, being on the, in the reset area, so we discussed that in our, in our meeting again yesterday.
Right, and, you know, at this point, they realize that nothing would happen with that before the summer anyway, so they have...
I just want to make sure the conversation is still going.
It's still going.
Okay, strategic planning. We have...
I'll see, we, we're only getting cases. We've been, we've been back to school nights.
Yeah, we've been, a lot of emails going down the board.
BTA meetings, reach out to BTA presidents, BTA presidents, and blasting out, you know, all kinds of messages, I think, a lot, a lot at this point. Back to school, they added, we do classroom videos, the principals, Dr. George, administration's folks, the principals, they have a message, have a survey, phenomenal of a place. A few of us are going to be at Middletown Day, I guess, at a table.
We'll be at Middletown Day, under the tent with the township committee. Yeah, and we have taken a little two-hour slots.
Right.
Mrs. Greg will be there in the morning, 11 to 1, and then John will be there 1 to 3, and I'll be there 3 to 5.
Yeah, and...
The administration will be there as well.
Sounds like the message you're getting out, I don't know where the survey results were, but I think it was around 2,000.
2,000.
Over 2,000.
Over those a week or so ago.
Just got 2,000.
A lot is out there, folks are doing survey, hopefully folks will then, the forms.
Well, the other thing is, from a, from a committee perspective, Schoolhouse Strategies has provided us with draft agenda and draft materials for our sessions, for our forums, so that's with the committee to review. I think, you know, the committee's approach would be the same as with the survey, you said we'll do it better this time, which is that we'll make our first pass review. Any issues, I know I had some, I started marking up the PowerPoints. And then once the committees have to, we'll circulate it to the full board, get their comments back, and then once that's done, we'll come to the final back and agenda. But it's really just very straightforward, the high level is that it's a two-hour session, there'll be some introductory remarks by Dr. George, by Mrs. Rogers. Schoolhouse Strategies will then lead a session, it will be a town hall-style session. The approach will be, you're familiar with the SWOT analysis, where it's a four-quadric board, and they pin up everything that's discussed, you can talk about whether it's a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, or a threat to the district. We'll do that three times, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Schoolhouse Strategies will be responsible for totally, highly, all of that data, anytime they have to do a report. So Schoolhouse Strategies is going to say anything at this point, they just, they lead. No, no, you're shaking your head, yes, and you're saying you have no.
No, no, they're going to be, they are going to be facilitating the session after the introductory remarks, and they will be leading the forum through the profile and the...
Ready to mission.
We just got, we just got hours before the meeting, yes, I already...
So we need to be sure we know what they're going to say. Yes, so that's, so there's, so there's a script and there's two PowerPoints. And so that's what I said, what the committee will do is review the script, review the two PowerPoints. For example, one of their PowerPoint slides is outdated by a year, I think, so we're going to make sure it's got the latest information on it. Then we'll turn it around, get the revisions, circulate those to the board, the general comments, the law sort of thing, that they're...
As far as you're circulating, this is prior to your presentation.
Wouldn't be helpful to do that.
No, well, maybe, you know, I just want to make sure that we're getting...
Are they going to be suggesting things to the public, or are they going to have the public suggest to them? Like, are they going to?
No, they're going...
My concern is setup. You know, I don't want person, people's personal opinions put up there, and then the public have to decide on them. My thought is it should be the public's ideas that we're putting on those posters, and not us leading them to a certain...
No, my understanding is your, this is your understanding as well, I think that's the rest of our understanding as well.
Whatever.
They're going to create, they're supposed to create flow batteries and information to provide all the information, we're supposed to show... You're supposed to show the profile of our district post office, um, they're not running our district well, they're not history. Um, but in terms of the organization, it has to be structured, like, this can't be, this is not like, hey, hey, Bobby, let's have like a thousand screaming people up there. Or it's going to go nowhere like the last one. So these could have to be structured, but it will be structured based on the data that we have. Here's the data, here's the information, here's how you do SWOT, and SWOT's going to tell you where you're going in which direction, what are the issues on. If you look at the survey, survey types, ask people, what do you think, right, it's data day. And so when that comes out, we also talked about five-year projects on, on the budget, I mean, that's conversation, I don't want to tell you that that can't happen, right? You can't be in a deficit, right? So, end of the day, we put people's personal, but end of the day, it's important, if the non-people here can't help Travis, and I don't know if that's a shouldn't be. Right, so, end of the day, they're, they got to review it, and we're hoping to go a little bit earlier, but we'll go through to make sure there's not any obvious type of things, um, that will want to structure that we talked about, and the board will see it. Um, and then that'll be that, and we'll, they'll present, and we'll have the administration will be there, the board members will be there, I think they will have a chance to speak. And I think the first reforms will be interesting, um, you know, hopefully we'll see how the first one goes, and the next day probably we'll save it, I'm guessing there'll be modifications, just to see how it, you know, how, how it works best.
And just to be clear, it's, you know, in general, it's not going to be a free-for-all, it'll be a facilitated discussion, so we're going to walk through topics. So we're going to talk about enrollment challenges, we're going to talk about budget challenges, we're going to talk about the state of our buildings, we're going to talk about, um, you know, the, you know, there might be something about, uh, she said, there might be something, talking about what the academic priorities of the district are. Within those facilitated categories of conversation, those topics, we expect to hear all manner of suggestion from the public. What's important to this person is not going to be as important to that person, but they'll get taken in. The purpose of the SWOT analysis is to put it up on the board, and for everybody to see that and say, is this a strength of the district? And if it is, that's great, we need to lean on it, or is this a threat that we have to address? But everybody's comment is valid, because it'll fit into one of those four quadrants, no matter how off the wall it may be.
No offense, John, but you've got to be careful how you say that, because if you remember the last elementary, I don't commit anything, comment with me, listen, we'll listen to you, but it's our decision, that's kind of what I just heard you say. I want not folks to do it. You want the public to feel like their input is going to mean something.
I believe that, but also believe that the reason why we're not using, um, uh, school boards, right, is because it was, it, it really, it didn't get me. It was informational, but it, you know, we have to accept the plan, it really just didn't, the, the, the reason why we hired this company is to organize information.
Organize and prioritize, that's what the.
They're going to take it, how, how do you filter this information? How do you filter it? How do you get it into a meaningful, like, something that comes out of this where you can understand? It's not easy, that's the hard work, that's the skill that we don't have. Um, and, and that's what we'll get, see how it comes up, at the end of the day, we'll have to make sure that it's, it's objective and, and goes through that. I think the public also votes for us too, right? So at the end of the day, in ours, there is a lot of input from the public. You've sent out a survey, we can talk to people all the time, we'll see how, we'll see how it goes, it, you know, who knows, maybe nothing comes out.
The town hall is meant to be public-based, we want the public opinion, we want to know what their priorities are. The final piece of it will be that the nine of us will vote for that.
And I just have to say something. You keep going after school boards. Five years ago, when we did it with school boards, it's what the community needed. Now we're doing it, the needs of the community are different, and five years from now, they're going to be complaining about how we did it with this company, and it wasn't the needs of the district. The needs of the district changed drastically, so try not to keep putting down all the people that sat on the school boards, strategic planning, because at that time, they did what the community wanted. I know you didn't like it, but a lot of other people did, and the needs then were much different than now. Now the needs are different, and five years from now, the needs that we're working on now aren't going to mean anything to those parents, it's going to be a whole different set of needs. So just try not to compare the people that sat on that strategic planning committee the last time, they put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of staff, and it was successful for them. Now it's time for change. The needs are different. And five years from now, the needs are going to be different.
First of all, not putting it down, like I spent time.
Well, it sounds like you are.
No, I, I, I was there last time as well.
I know.
And, and, and I said, I was with the crowd, I, I participated, and I saw it, not putting it down, but this is a plan, I have to come up with a plan. Like, the other one was, and this was the feedback from the administration, it was a checklist, a lot of it was a checklist. I mean, that wasn't my words, that was their words.
But that's what this is going to be, once we put it together, it's going to be a checklist.
Well, hopefully not.
Okay, so guys, I think we've thought about this enough for months and months and months, and I think we should just move forward.
I, I agree, Pam, but I really resent the fact that every time it's brought up, you don't realize you're offending the people that put all this time and hours, and I'm not talking about myself, because we weren't on the committee, the public was. We can't keep insulting them, if we're saying they're, they're big and.
Whoa, 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 I'm not insulting anybody, I'm not insulting anybody.
John, I mean, wanting or not, it's.
You're putting words in my mouth, I'm not insulting anybody.
Not putting words in.
Try, we're trying to make, we're trying to make a process, and what, and you're correct, we're trying to build, I think the last time it was done was like a ten-year hiatus, and I think that it formed, I mean, and you're correct, you try to build and try to improve, and maybe it changes the next time. That's all we're saying, not insulting people, don't put words in my mouth, you know, the, the point is, it, we'll see how this goes. I mean, last time we, we did it one stop, and as you said, maybe it evolves. In terms of the district having different issues, I think those issues have existed for a while, um, I think maybe there are new challenges, but some of these same conversations that we're probably going to have again, we're going, we're talking, I guess, old business about a new development, these are some of the same things that we've gone off a deck. I don't know what you're talking about, there's been, I mean, you've lived here a long time, I've lived here a long time, some of these issues have existed for a very long time. So we'll see where it comes out, if the public has appetite for something, we'll see, if they don't, they don't, and we move on from there.
And just after comparing the last one to this one, because they're different, and, and you might not think you're insulting people, but you are, many people have said it.
Okay.
It's the way you say it.
Okay, so let's move on, and in reference to this new strategic plan that we're doing now, I just want to say thank you to all the board members. I sent you a couple of emails, you all went above and beyond, you showed up to back to school nights, um, and I'm appreciative of all the, our work that you put in. I know they're ready to come out with a positive outcome, um, from the strategic plan. Let's move on to personnel, please.
So, um, we, we're about three weeks into this, so we thought it was important to give a quick update on, um, our transition with ESS, uh, with respect to fulfilling our substitute needs. We did a quick comparison just of three-week data, um, to kind of frame, uh, the trending that, that we've experienced, uh, with regard to our substitute fill rates. So over, um, actually, we did a two, a two-week period, this week obviously is not completed. Um, we have experienced that overall, both teacher, certificated staff, secretary, and paraprofessional, uh, a ninety-three percent fill rate for all types of absences. Uh, when we break it down, uh, we are for paraprofessionals, which was our most concerning, um, area that we were looking to improve, our fill rate. We have, uh, already about a sixty-seven percent, uh, fill rate when it comes to absences for specific paraprofessionals, meaning their personal days or their sick days. Um, that's, that is an increase, uh, from about forty-five percent, which we were experiencing in the past, on average, daily average. Uh, when you take into account supplemental assignments for paraprofessionals, uh, that sometimes come up, because you have, uh, an IP that goes into effect, and the next day you have to have a, a paraprofessional in place, we're actually experiencing an eighty-seven percent, uh, fill rate. So again, significant improvement, uh, over that two-week period compared to last year's averages of about forty-six, forty-seven percent. For MTEA staff members, um, we're looking at about a ninety-eight percent fill rate, fill rate, which, if you remember when ESS was here, they were forthcoming and said that it's going to be really hard to move the needle on your fill rate for your MTEA certified staff members especially, because we were averaging about a ninety-four percent fill rate, uh, which is considered exceptional by, by all margins, um, because industry standard is eighty-five percent fill rate, uh, for substitute needs. But we're already seeing about ninety-eight percent fill rate, and, uh, that, that also remains at ninety-eight percent when you add in supplemental assignments, uh, for, uh, teachers and certificated staff as well. Uh, ESS, our onsite district manager has started, uh, Deanna Scanlon has been working hand-in-hand with our principals, our directors, our district directors, uh, with all human resources staff, um, even with Mrs. Walker's, uh, departments, uh, Mrs. Dr. Tiedemann, uh, in securing long-term, uh, replacement, uh, staff, uh, at a very quick rate. Uh, we have unexpected leaves that come up, our teachers, our certificated staff, our paraprofessionals, our humans, sometimes they get ill, uh, without, you know, notice, um, like everyone else. And, uh, in the past, we would have had to either put a temporary, hold temporary assignment, uh, and then wait till hosting, wait till the next board meeting, but we have been able to put, um, leave replacements in within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, um, with their assistance. So we have consistency of instruction. Uh, they have, Deanna has also been attending several back-to-school nights, you might have seen her, she has been, um, advertising to recruit new substitutes for our district within our community, to improve, uh, the numbers that we have available. And she's also planning a job fair in district on October twenty-fourth, so we're going to start advertising that, we just finalized, um, that information. And, uh, ESS is also going to be present with the district, uh, at Milltown Day, advertising, recruiting, uh, like they said that they would do community outreach, so they are, um, I would say fulfilling their, uh, promises so far, so.
Awesome. Can the rate, you're saying the rates are high that we're filling, what is our absentee rate for the first couple of weeks of school?
Uh, well, if you break down the numbers, uh, we, I, we have had a total, all staff affected that we're quantifying here, so paraprofessionals, MTEA staff members, we've had six hundred and thirty-seven total absences or supplemental assignments over that two-week period. So that can also include leaves, um, new assignments that come about, again, IP is written, and the next day you have to create a new paraprofessional assignment, and you have to put it in place, you know, immediately.
How many paraprofessional assignments are that filled that we're covering people?
Um, I believe as of today, uh, Dr. Tiedemann, I think we have two. One to two. One just came up, and the other one came up, I think, last week. It's actually a really short assignment, so we have actually done outreach to our paraprofessionals on a priority list, um, we haven't had success with, uh, interest in the one assignment, especially because of the small amount of hours, so we're working on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn the pre-meeting workshop and open the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And now I'd like to open, uh, the public comment on agenda and presentations. If you have comments on presentations. Okay, moving on to approval of proclamation, oh, sorry, for Alpha and Delta Kappa, um, for the seventy-second anniversary of Alpha and Delta Kappa, the International Honorary Organization of Human Engineers. Do I have to read the whole one? Okay, good. Um, moving on, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session on August twenty-eighth, under regular order, voting meetings, sorry, on August twenty-eighth.
So moved.
I'm just saying. Thank you. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to stay on that one.
Okay.
I abstain.
Okay. Let's see, so for the report, the president, I just got this on my desk when I walked in, says, uh, dear Pamela, congratulations, I am pleased to inform you that the Middletown Township Board of Education has earned the Carol E. Larson Master Board Certification Award. By meeting the New Jersey School Association Board Member Academy rigorous standards, your board has demonstrated a high regard for effective governance and student achievement. Please note that your board is a mom and week group, which has earned the award since its inception in two thousand and seven. We would like to honor you, your board, at the Monmouth County School Board Association meeting on Thursday evening, October tenth, two thousand and nineteen, with dinner starting at six P M. at Holton Inn. Um, let me keep the address for second. Uh, we invite you, your board member, superintendent, and business administrator to attend. Uh, you can register online through the New Jersey School Board's website. And they need to know who will be attending by October nineteenth.
It can't be.
What? Please register online through our normal procedures at New Jersey School Board Association as soon as possible with the names of your district representatives, who will be attending on the, October nineteenth. Also, there is no deadline.
What's the date, October tenth or October nineteenth?
It's a confusing.
It could be a tight one.
No.
Okay.
It's a confusingly written.
It may have been September nineteenth, the letter day is September fourth.
There's two, there's two things I'm talking about.
You know, you know.
There's two items there, there's the recognition date on the tenth, and then there's the meeting on the nineteenth. That's how, that's how I read it.
We would like to honor your board, the Monmouth County School Board Association, being on Thursday evening, October tenth, with a dinner, okay? Please register online. Okay, register online, and then let us know who will be attending the meeting, all right? You don't want me to pass this around to everybody, but, uh, congratulations. Cheers to us, guys.
Cheers.
Cheers. All right. Okay, and now I need a motion to approve B one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Um, next, I need a motion to approve C one through five.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Excellent.
One through four. Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed on number one and number three.
Okay, uh, abstentions? Okay, um, I need a motion to approve number fifteen.
Superintendent.
You have anything else, okay?
That's what I was saying.
A one.
We have somebody.
A one.
So moved.
A one, and including the agenda. No, okay, never mind, okay, so back to that, A one, I need a motion to approve A one.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So now on to B. One through four.
Including the additional items for number three on the agenda.
Right. Okay.
So moved.
Okay, um.
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve E one through three. And the, um, number four.
So moved.
Second. Second, thank you. Okay, um, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve F.
Now, Mrs. Rogers, we really know all the, all I know, too.
Okay. All right, so let's do, um. Okay, let's do, uh, roll call vote for our, all of our finances, I'm sorry, number one.
Including number nine on the agenda.
Including number nine on the agenda, that's right.
Okay, roll call for items one through nine of our finances. Mrs. Caminiti? Oh, sorry, I gave them all to her.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Donner?
Yes.
Mr. Dino?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Ninn?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve G one through three.
Three's on the.
Three on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions? Okay.
I abstain on the G two.
I'm staying on the G2.
Okay. All right, personnel, I need a motion to approve numbers 2.
There's number 1.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so I need a motion to approve number 1 through 8, plus the addendum to number 2.
Right, it's actually addendum 1 through 9, including the items listed on the addendum.
Right, it's on the first level of the board. Items 1, 9, including the items listed on the addendum.
All of the items on the addendum?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I need a motion to approve the personnel report. So that's number 1 through 8 on the regular agenda, right? And then on the addendum, numbers 2 through, I have until 16. Okay.
So moved.
Second. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, now I have no more to go up to the board. Okay, everybody. Now, we're moving on to old business.
So I think as part of old business, we want to revisit the discussion around Taylor Lane.
Absolutely. So as far as Taylor Lane goes, here, you know, we have two options. We can leave things where they are, as is, and the kids are districted for Village, Thompson, and then North. Or what we can do is we can, just in the interim, before we make big decisions on the strategic plan, we can just spot, I guess you'd call it spot redistrict. I know that's like a dirty word, but just that little area where there are no students living yet, and people have not even gone to homes yet, so it won't affect children in any way. You know, children won't be torn from their friends.
And they have expectations, they're not expecting to go grab school, get homes, which you're getting. You're buying the house, and this is where it is, it's all part of the strategic plan policy. And if whatever happens, happens, if nothing happens, well, then they still are not going there.
Just a comment for, towards privileged anticipations issue coming up tonight. I reviewed your policy manual as well as state statute. I just want to read some of the relevant provisions of your policies to help frame the conversation and dialogue. But also, if that thing addresses some of the comments that we made earlier regarding distance from school, over certain distance requires transportation, require expenditure additional funds. I heard questions about the availability of the spatial act that were. So I just want to read some provisions. Under Policy 8110, attendance areas, 8110, of the relevant portions and paragraph points to this conversation, I'll read it as follows. Individual school attendance, individual school attendance district boundaries shall be established by the Board of Education and may be changed as population condition warrant or capacities of building require adjustments of pupil lives. Second paragraph states, pupils shall attend the school in the attendance district in which state reside unless assigned to another district, another school by the superintendent. And here are certain circumstances, or exceptional circumstances, where by superintendent is used to do that. Policy 5120, assignment of pupils, the Board of Ed, some of this is repetitive, but the Board of Ed directs the assignment of pupils to all district schools consistent with the best interest of pupils and the best uses of the resources of this district. Pupils shall attend the school located in the attendance area of their residence unless assigned to another school by the superintendent. The superintendent may assign a pupil to a school other than that designated by the attendance area, and such an exception is justified by extraordinary circumstances for the best interest of the district pupils. The superintendent shall assign incoming transfer pupils to a school with their attendance area of their residence provided the addition of school or class side requirements can accommodate the pupil's enrollment. So in that instance, if the original school is over crowded, the superintendent would presumably be obligated to, or have the option to, reassigning students, or assigning students rather to a school outside that attendance area. Here from my second, school organization, 8130, the superintendent shall continually monitor the effectiveness of the district organizational plan and recommend to board such modifications in the plan as may be in the best interest of pupils, make most effective use of district resources, conserve educational goals of the board. And lastly, pupil transportation, 8600, Policy 8600. Essentially, grades K through 8, the board must provide transportation for pupils who reside more than 2 miles from their home. In grades 9 through 12, the district must provide transportation to students who reside more than 2.5 miles from their home. So in this instance, I think there's a conversation about the closest school in that area being over 4 miles. If you choose to keep that in place, you are also going to assume a financial expenditure for transportation. There is, and there's a provision, I didn't, my brother. So even if, even if the student is below the requirements of 2 and 2.5 miles, it is a provision in state statute as well as your policy, which allows for currency busting with desert, emergency, or hazardous route. So that would be applied. So I just wanted, again, to tell you your policy manual so you can be guided accordingly in your discussion.
So does that mean that, so there wouldn't be an added expense of transportation?
I don't know if.
You can say, because we have that. So, so the way I understood that was that if we chose, for example, to have Taylor Lane middle school students go for Thor and Thompson, would it still be required to bust them on a courtesy busting because Route 35 is a hazard? So there was no cost savings from a, from a transportation perspective either.
So it's a wash then, right?
Yeah.
In your policy, in your policy 8600, you would have to essentially designate the hazardous route. There are 10 or so criteria that the board can take into account. Traffic volume, 1, existence of sufficient sidewalks, roads or highways. So that would incorporate the analysis.
The benefit though, the benefit of it would be that Thompson is so over crowded. And this is an opportunity to start the process of not making it even more overcrowded. Even though we don't know how many kids are going to come out of that project, there might not be a lot.
There might not be any at Thompson.
There, there might be a lot, there might not be a lot. But the bottom line is, you know, everybody's been complaining for years, the last few years, on how overcrowded Thompson is. And we have, and, and one of the biggest complaints about how we did it before was we were moving students from their school and their friends and uprooting them. And that's something that this community didn't want to see. Now we have a development coming in that nobody lives in, so we wouldn't be uprooting or disturbing kids, and we would be utilizing space in schools that are just as good and have space for more kids.
It would proact it then.
I'm just trying to, I would hear. I would like to hear the downfall, if people have the downfall to it. Because I'm, I'm only presenting what I feel.
How many kids are you talking about?
We have no idea yet.
And also Laurel Green, you know that, right? And that's why it's over crowded, Laurel Green from the little villages going over the nuts farm. So when you do this kind of zoning, it, it, it might be currently now some kind of issue, but I don't even know, right? Is, is Thompson in issue, like, is it survivable? I don't know, right? Because you talked about it, five years, things change, but now it's spot zoning. What data are we using to make, like, what's the data, what's the reason, what's the impact? Are these kids going to be tilted over, is this Village not, is this Village? I don't know, I haven't seen anything.
Village has been a feeder school.
Do I understand that, was Village not at capacity? I don't, I don't.
For me, for me, with my part of saying, you know, going to Thorn, I would hope, hope that they go to Harmony. Because if we're sending them to Village, you know, we're sending them to Thorn, we're separating them again from the kids that they went to elementary school with. I would want them to stick the base where their friends are wanting to go.
I was talking to people, Oshinak, who were saying that. You know, I went to grammar school with these kids, and I have new friends in middle school, and then I have to go back, and then I have different friends in high school. Can I just stay with my friends? And when I just stay close.
And what about the people that live, among other people that live on Taylor Lane? Like, so are these kids because they live in apartments or affordable houses? Or are they not going to talk to the other people who live on the streets? I mean, right, you've driven down to Taylor Lane, there's other houses there. I mean, so just by neighborhood, like, there's a neighborhood too, right? So, you know, we're talking about neighborhood, which is legitimate. I, I just don't know what is the driver of that's going to tilt the roll call. When you're taking a project, that was the word used, to, and move them.
No, but it sounds like we talked, there would be useful ones.
No, I don't know what that is.
I have an example. And it happens in every single community, and I don't know why people don't realize that. A few years ago, people from Bayview, Bayview area, came up to us. One house goes to Bayview, and the next house goes to New Monmouth. There's always a line. And, and right on, even over by Harmony, off of Harmony Road, that first street after Harmony, you go down three houses, those kids go to Harmony. The rest go to Village across the highway. Same community, same kids they're playing with, same thing that would be happening in Taylor Lane, whether they're in the new development or the old. There's always a line in every community where the elementary schools are divided, and one neighbor goes to one school, and the other neighbor goes to another. And it's the same with bus stops. You know, we had a lady here from Bayview telling us, hey, I got all these kids from New Monmouth on my front lawn every morning because she lives next door to the line, and her child lives at Bayview, and the other goes to New Monmouth. That's every section, that's just an example. I'm using, I'm not picking on particulars. Port Monmouth.
Were they contributing more to that? I don't understand.
John, Port Monmouth is the same way.
On the island?
You go down Main Street, Port Monmouth, before you get to that little.
I, I was talking about.
Those kids go to Harmony, they could walk to Port Monmouth.
But you're saying that makes it right. I mean, that makes that kind of, where you drive down East Road, and it's like, if I go towards north on Swartz Hole, I'm Bayview. If I go down Heart, I'm Monmouth. If you guys say, oh, let's make it, let's keep doing it, it's crazy.
John, can we do something revisional? You can't have a vote race. You can't make a decision on a strategic plan as the board, but we can't make a decision on laundry.
I didn't say we couldn't make a decision, I'm saying what you're basically basing on.
We're giving you what we're basing it on, I don't know what we're basing it on.
I'll base it on that, I have nothing in front of me to tell me why.
You cannot possibly have numbers, the houses weren't sold yet, so we can't give you bodies. We don't know who's buying them.
Why are we making this a question?
Because you, you want the people to come up and say, I bought this house in good faith, thinking I was going to Village Elementary School. Because when I called the Board of Ed, they said it's zoned for Village right now. Because right now it's zoned for Village.
When you had your committee meetings, were you looking at enrollment and stuff? And you had this discussion.
You have finance? Yeah, we have all the numbers. So Thompson is overcrowded.
All right, so, you're asking a committee meeting, right? We, we, I don't remember analyzing anything, it hasn't already helped with me.
Yeah.
The information is out there, but.
We have the information that's been out there from last year, where Thompson.
So, right, I, I just don't understand, like, why we say, oh, we've done it this way, and, you know, it's one district, and I don't, I don't know what to say. I think someone made a promise, I don't know, are you negotiating a house price deal?
I don't know, it's barely a house sitting there.
On the Board of Ed, are you?
Yeah, so, out there on the news.
I don't get it, I said to you like you're saying, okay, let's just, I don't.
I want to, I want to, I want to just back up, I want to just back up.
Okay, Mr. DeFranco.
Thank you. Wow, so formal. So, Mrs. Gallagher did, you know, indicated that these maps are posted again up on the district website. These are here a few years ago, and I think we're all pretty familiar with these maps. The, the thing about the back and forth discussion on this, I mean, there, there are merits on both sides of this discussion. I think, I think the idea of telling a new resident definitively where they're going to go to school is helpful. But I think the downside to that is that looking at this map, and looking at where Taylor Lane is, and looking at North Marine, which is an island, and looking at this part of Village that goes across Route 35, and understanding what the enrollments are like in the Thorn sending zone here, at this little pinwheel right here, it's easy to look at this map and listen to what Mr. Taylor had run us and say, you know what, there are some lines that need to be moved around, and not. And so the, and so the question that I keep coming back to on this is, so once some people moving in, you're going to Harmony, when in fact, it may turn out that they do go to Village, and we're going to take another block, and we're going to move that block over to Harmony.
But that could take another how many years?
Actually, no, it should only take one.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to that.
That's fine, that's why we got elected. But the point is that I'm, I'm hesitant to make a spot redistricting recommendation, knowing that this whole map is under consideration as part of strategic planning. You know, because if you look at the big color splottages over here on, you know, the south, you know, side of town, these color splottages are huge compared to the color splottages up here on the north side of town, and they each represent one school. And I know that back when these were drawn, densities were a lot different, and there was so much more density on the north side, but now that density is in the south side. And these color splottages probably need to be smaller, and these color splottages need to be bigger. So if we are going to be going through this holistic exercise at looking at all of our sending zones, that we run the risk of tell, of, of doing to these people moving into Taylor Lane exactly what you're trying not to do to them by spot redistricting. Plus, I feel that spot redistricting sets a bad precedent. We should be looking at these things under our policy periodically, not just when a new building comes in. And we should be doing this on the regular effectively to say, you know what, we have buildings, we have enrollments that go back and forth, and we need to be addressing them. I think spot redistricting is, is a bandaid. I'm not interested in a bandaid, I'm interested in a good fix. But I'm not saying, I'm not saying your, I'm not saying that your opinion doesn't have merit, because it does, I totally see it. You know, and this is exactly the split that we had last.
That's the problem with the document.
The problem with what you're saying, Nick, is we don't know that that's going to be addressed towards strategic planning. We have no idea if that's going to be addressed towards strategic planning. This might be something the community does not want to move, and then, then we've lost.
You mean, it's, what happened, we don't want to lose our schools, we don't want to change. This has come up before, so we stay status quo, and we just put in more houses into the school and then.
So these maps, it's aerial, I mean, we're looking at it from above. And so putting the, okay, putting the kids from Taylor Lane into Village might not look great on these maps, but if you were to map it, Taylor Lane is, what if we say it came 1.4 miles from Harmony, yet it's 4 miles?
It's 1.6. Taylor Lane is 1.2 miles from both Village and Harmony, that's not really important, but it's, it's 4 miles away from Thompson, 4 miles, and only 1.6 from Thorn. I mean, you know, I'm not.
4 miles from Thompson.
It's 3.6 miles.
Thompson is right next door to, I mean, not, not Thorn.
You're thinking about Thorn.
I meant Thorn, no, I'm thinking Thorn.
Yes, so Thorn, right. Thorn is right down here. So, maybe from the standpoint.
Thorn is closer and has room for kids.
Thorn is closer, has room for kids.
And I, and I agree with you guys for the future, for the future, I think we should adjust these things. But, you know, just for right now, I would like to strike a law. And we know we can do it.
Or, or people have problems, is it, is it a socioeconomic issue? What exactly is it that we don't want to? You can tell me that.
People might not come out, they might not want change, so I don't know. It is.
I'm not changing anything.
There's only people that, you know, there are going to be people, so it might not, there might not be any change. So if people don't want change, well, how's this going to make a difference other than creating another island of people that are going in a different direction all over the place? I, I don't see, you told me, well, you know, there's going to be, I don't know, 500 kids coming out of here. I was like, oh, okay, that might be a problem, but I think this is just, I don't, I don't see, kind of inconsistent what I'm saying. We're saying there's a problem with one of those schools.
Yes, we have Thompson in the problem.
I, I, I mean, people.
My daughter went there, it's crazy. But tickets, more homes.
I think this is jumping to the bottom, I think this, I don't think it's meaningful. I do think there is, there are, it is multifamily conflict. There are 41 houses there too, so that's something I do think is sensitive to.
Let's let Mr. Little finish, and then.
No, I do think there's a sensitivity to that too.
That's why I'm asking.
To me, whether it's optical or not, I mean, that's sort of saying, okay, these people don't count as something.
Okay, and Mrs. Caminiti, what did you want to say?
I want to make a motion that we vote on this, that we vote forward, we make a move on this area, this development that's going up, that now they go to Harmony, they go to Thorn, and then we zone for it.
I will second your motion.
Thank you.
May I make a, I guess, a question or comment, or a comment here? The.
The motion seems to be based upon the fact that Thompson Middle School is presently, I won't say over-credited, but at or near capacity, that's what it sounds like. And the motion seems to be predicated upon the fact that there is a development that is proposed to be completed in approximately one year.
Two developments.
Two developments.
Exactly. And the children will come to our schools in fall of 2020.
So, in anticipation of, we don't know how many families.
We have some idea.
However, if it's one, it may be, it will add to or exacerbate the problem, correct? Is that fair? This is an area, and I read the policies, where does the board set the boundary line, so to speak? I don't know what the boundary line, what I said. But I would suggest that you, during this colloquy, this dialogue, that we allow the superintendent to, I'm sort of in the spot, but I think it would be appropriate to hear the administration's position on this. Then the board can vote your opinion, but I think it would be appropriate.
Yeah. So, I agree with concerns of districting. I understand the concern as it relates to the over-crediting. The over-crediting is an issue currently for the entire district. And I think that, as expressed today, looking at, looking at a spot redistricting sends the message that, that there may not be a commitment from the board for long-term change or for bigger change. And, you know, I'd like to see a more comprehensive approach addressing this issue. So, that would be respectful.
Dr. George, when a student enrolls, let's say, Linkcroft School, and they enroll late, they're then sent to a feeder school because one school is too crowded. That's in a sense, spot redistricting, right there. And as a parent whose daughter attended Thompson, whose child now goes to South, I do know that these schools, schools are more full, even though we have problems throughout the district. But like I said, when we send students to those feeder schools, in a sense, we're spot redistricting those children. So, to me, it's the same thing, but in this case, we're sending an entire group of people, haven't bought their homes yet, they haven't formed any attachments yet, and we're sending them to a less crowded school, so.
Well, I would suggest that those examples, and that's an example, and I completely respect your opinion on this, but those examples just are evidence of how we need to take a more comprehensive approach at this issue.
And just because we're sending them possibly to Harmony, Thorn, North, doesn't mean that we're not willing to make changes throughout the district. That'll take it or flex. I don't think that it reflects that.
I think the board is dedicated to make those changes.
You both are determined with a destination, right? So, you've already determined, okay, we, you talk about middle school, we already decided Harmony. There's other schools, so I don't understand. Are we also, is this another motion to say, you think this should be in action? And then acting, the whole other process, which I think that this, the administration should be looking at, which elementary school are you talking about? You're assuming Harmony has room, I mean, it doesn't have a preschool in it, doesn't have other things in it? Like, we're just saying, oh, go to Harmony.
Harmony is not advertised, from what I remember.
Well, say, this is what I remember, but I, I think we should do a little bit more analysis. Like, okay, if you make a decision, this should be moved, that's one thing, I appreciate you. But then you're basing it to destination without, since this administration even telling me what the destination is.
But they've given us the data, we have the data.
Well, they told you Harmony, first of all, superintendent's not that many, and secondly, she didn't tell you what school you'd use, so you're setting a choice, right? So, would it be Harmony? I don't know, it could be some different school. I would not, I think we're doing a lot of stuff here without a lot of information. I mean, one day to decide, make change, I appreciate that. The second part about where they go, I think where they go should be forward too, right? You gotta make sure that school.
We've been talking about this for weeks.
Yeah, I mean, could we table it and really discuss it, maybe next month at executive session?
Oh, my God.
It's not an executive session, Tyler. This is a.
This is the third time, this is the third time we've discussed this in public. This is the third time at a public meeting that we've done this.
No, I'm just highlighting that, like, that, you know, we're saying, well, it's moving, also assuming Harmony. Is that a decision made?
Well, Mrs. Kennedy is making a motion so that we can move on it. Either we say yes, or we say no.
I said.
To keep the friends together.
And it's been seconded.
And it's been seconded by me.
And I want to say, you know, Mrs. Kennedy and I are disagreeing. I appreciate Mrs. Kennedy making the motion.
And you'll go no.
It's fine.
Can we move forward and with the roll call vote?
When does the public get to comment?
Public comment period is.
After new business.
But for this, I mean, if you vote now.
Maybe now with this vote.
Excuse me?
If you vote on this right now, the public has never been given an opportunity to comment on it.
Understood, however, this is a walk-on item, which is permitted on the Open Public Meetings Act. This is not the public comment period, man. So, you will have an opportunity to public during the.
And we vote.
Limited, or rather be a public comment.
Can't we make an exception?
I'm fine with you getting up and speaking if you'd like to.
Honestly, it's not me. I feel like there are potentially residents on Taylor Lane who might want to leave. Current residents?
Well, we've mentioned this, this is our third time.
Okay.
The third time we've voted, I tried to make a motion three meetings ago.
It's two.
I want to comment on this.
How am I going to run to our own vote? Should I? Oh, I'll turn, slide over to the right side, and then wait for it to turn.
Once it's green, you're good.
Sue Griffin, One Hall and Road. At the beginning of August, I worked at every single one of you. And I expressed my disappointment with combining the workshop meeting and the voting meeting in the same evening. This is the perfect sample of why I asked. There is no way that you guys can successfully, and, God, I hate to be right.
I'm sorry, excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. However, the purpose of the comment should be limited to this.
Oh, it is.
Motion is going to take the floor presently, so the order of meetings, et cetera, we just kind of bring it into the framework of the resolutions from the floor, thank you.
Okay, and then should I specify it to the Taylor Lane?
I just wanted to be sure you weren't going off one of other issues.
Oh, I'm not, I'm.
To Taylor Lane, to the motion that Miss Kennedy.
To the motion of the Taylor Lane discussion. Does that help?
It is.
Okay, to the motion of the Taylor Lane discussion. I don't know how you can successfully discuss, digest, understand, develop questions, have a free and open discussion, consider community input, and make an informed vote in one evening.
It's not one evening, it's been.
It's been three public meetings, and we have a meeting. We've been bringing it up.
I don't even bring it up.
And shared services.
No, sorry, so if you can let her finish her comments, then we can respond, thank you.
Public comment is not available this evening because the public was not notified about this going on for a vote this evening.
What about the last two meetings that we had, or we mentioned?
Have you finished your comments?
No, not, if there's.
Well, if you finish your comments, then we'll respond. If not, we'll be here for a commercial.
I can help, Dave, so.
You got your three minutes.
My, my comment is the same. Without having advertised that things like this are going to come up, it can't possibly be advertised because the discussion cannot be had the way a formal workshop has worked in the past, where something comes up, you put it on the agenda for the next voting meeting, and people can come out and comment on it. We can't do this. And the public loses the option of that discussion.
Okay, but what's the comment on Taylor Lane, where he's weighing in?
There's nobody from Taylor Lane here. So, nobody from Taylor Lane can.
The houses aren't built yet. The houses aren't built yet that we're talking about.
I'm very well aware of that.
Right.
The houses aren't built yet, and I'm very well aware, and for the record, I agree with the spot redistricting. People from Taylor Lane may not, and they don't have.
You think they wish not?
I don't know, I really don't know.
I understand you not agreeing with the process, I can understand everything else you say. You don't think, I don't agree with you on that.
No, I'm not, I don't know if they're ever not. What I'm saying is they don't have the ability to voice them.
Okay.
So, are you finished, man?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, your point is very well taken, however, in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, A, the public is allotted a portion of a board education meeting to comment, which we have. Two, there is no requirement for there to be a work session and a regular action meeting for a New Jersey board education. So, this board, under its governance requirements and obligations, exercising that right to have one meeting is purely within its discretion. In fact, this dual meeting tonight is just as long as when you have a work session and a regular meeting. So, doing two in one night is no difference, actually more efficient probably with the workers. And with respect to any administration, the public, and everyone else, with respect to the walk-on item, the Open Public Meetings Act does permit a public, any school district, school board, city council, pre-holders to have a walk-on item at a regularly scheduled and annually advertised meeting, which this is. And so, procedurally, the action that has been recommended by the motion by Miss Kennedy is appropriate, only the standing link. I'm sorry, I can't respond, so you can tell us.
Sorry, thanks, thanks.
Here, Paseki, my question, I'm going to hold that. Although you guys have discussed this, it's never been on the agenda, it's been published with public, and based on all of the rules that I've learned about Mr. Taylor, really, it appears to me it's not even a board voting. It seems to be at the discretion of the superintendent. And you're not only impacting Taylor Lane, you're impacting Harmony, Thorn, a whole bunch of other schools and populations that hasn't had an opportunity to discuss this. And all I'm hearing is, if I remember right, Harmony has room. If I remember right, why don't we let the administration look at it, make an educated decision, and put a recommendation for it? Why are we rushing tonight to do this? I don't understand why we're not listening to our administrator. And one month is not going to kill us. I don't think three months is going to kill us if we're going strategic planning. It seems there truly is an option to look at it. So, I'm just, I'm just a little taken aback that there's this huge rush to do this, and it's going to impact not just Taylor Lane, it's going to impact three or four other schools.
Who's going to, I'm going to motion.
There's a motion on the floor presently. The, you can make a motion to amend, so pursuant to, it's almost midnight, you going to test me now? No? But pursuant to Robert's orders, there can be a motion to amend. And that motion to amend would have to be voted on, and then if that passes, then the roll call will be on the amended motion. So, what is your, what do you want amended?
I want to amend the motion to allow us to put this on the voting agenda for the next month's meeting, to give the administration time to back up their reasons why they don't, why they think these students should go where they want to go.
So, you're essentially wanting to table a motion essentially?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. The.
Don't I have to vote as a motion? That's the bottom line, I got to draw the motion. We still want them. Yeah, let's let them publicly.
Let them finish first. The table with Taylor, the board, it was on the screen.
Hi, Rachel's an advocate. I honestly don't have an opinion on what should be on. I don't know enough, I don't have the information. My only warning, I guess, as a member of the public, is that just because you can't do something tonight, doesn't mean you should. I am concerned that especially as you're kicking off strategic planning, and you want to be in a position of having trust with the public, you don't go vote on something that wasn't on the agenda, published to the public before the meeting. I feel like these houses are not being sold tomorrow. There is time to evaluate what needs to be done. I'm not saying that the idea of sending the kids to some other school other than what they're currently zoned for is the wrong idea or the right idea, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's super urgent and needs to be discussed or not discussed, decided tonight. But I do think there is a big risk of upsetting a lot of people if you were to vote on this tonight, and then tomorrow, people find out that something they had no idea about had voted on. So, that's my only, I would just think about that, especially as you're heading into such a critical time when public trust in the administration of Board of Ed is needed. Thank you.
I would just like to add on to that, because this, really, that, whatever the board decides, I want to take it to account, and I think we do need more time to look at what school would be an appropriate school to, if you're going to go ahead with this, going for the spot redistricting to use. Because we're not positive that Harmony would have the capacity to sort of these students. That's what I advise you to, don't think it does. I mean, it's not a school that has excess capacity itself at this time. So, we would need more time to take a look and see what the plan would be if the board is deciding to put this in.
I know, I know at the last meeting, Dr. George said New Momma. And my concern, my concern with that was that, though it's 35, would be going, you know, would have.
I didn't suggest.
No, you said, you know, it has the room. Yes, that's what you said.
Okay.
35 is very. That's very.
Okay, guys, listen, I'm going to draw a motion.
Okay, let's table it.
Yes, that's it, I withdrew the motion.
We have to make sure that it's on the agenda for the next meeting. Please, because this is the third time.
And I think anyone who's thinking about working there knows it's very much.
Well, I really appreciate a lot of people.
Wait, we have a question down here. What exactly would be on the agenda for the next meeting about this?
I have no idea.
I actually don't agree that must be on the agenda, because again, I don't think we have really fully discussed this and actually thought about this. And I actually agree with a lot of the comments. I'm going to vote no on the motion for the simple fact that we are heading into a whole strategic planning process. We may not actually wind up being part of it in the end, but I think it is going to be discussed as we go forward. And rather than making a very rash decision, we should really be thinking about this as a district, as a poll.
I think the theory is not making a decision, like, not making a decision on this, and then the houses are built, and they're promised to, is it?
Who promises?
For the best, I mean, that's.
I think the policy.
You read the policy, right? The policy says if there are issues with, or the population changes, whatever, that the board has the, has the right to do that. So, there is no inherent promise from anybody, right? I think that's a false statement. And I do think if you're going to make, if you're going to put on the agenda, are we going, are we going on the administration's recommendation? Or are we going off of the other?
I think it makes a lot of.
Recommendation to the new member.
I think, I think it makes a lot of sense to have the administration provide us, you know, we have the estimates that came from the township based on our previous charity services discussion. You know, the administration can come up with a plan, look at the impact on whether it be Harmony or New Momma, whether it be Thorn, Thompson, whatever, present that to the board. I think the motion to vote remains the same. Do we act now, or do we wait? If we act now, we're acting under the administration's recommendation. And I think, you know, do we do something, or do we sort of let it ride into your strategic planning and see how that shakes out?
The thing with the administration's recommendation, I recommend, is not to do.
And if that's.
You're asking the obvious solutions. If you decided, what would the solution be?
So, and if that's the administration's recommendation, and that's the administration's recommendation. So, I think that's.
My point is, we can vote on whatever, like, we want, and we can vote on the administration's recommendation. Or you can ask the administration to adopt a whole alternative plan. I don't see, I think.
I don't think it makes sense to ask the administration to recommend something they don't believe in. I think the administration will make their recommendation if there's still a desire amongst members of the board to put forth a motion to, to make a change, such as Mrs. Kennedy did, that's certainly right. And then we discuss it. But at least by that a month will pass, people will be talking about it, we'll all talk about it, and be a month older, and that much wisdom.
So, just so that as a record is clear, there was no recommendation from the administration's given. There was a comment from the administration about a motion that was put on the table by a board member that was seconded and still in discussion. That motion has since been withdrawn, and so there's nothing on the table for discussion right now from a procedural standpoint. standpoint, I think the role, the play is being called right now, um, is to, it might not be sensible for committee, or committee members, but rather have the administration review some data regarding, I guess, enrollment, trends, actual present enrollment, trends of enrollment, the... You have to do October 17th, excuse me? You have to do October 17th tomorrow, or what do you think? I don't know what's 17th, because I don't think that is...
That's the strategic planning, which I'm saying is...
Well versed in...
So, all I'm saying is, and just to make it clear, you know, really, you know, my role here is to provide you not...
I'm not in charge.
And this issue is not limited to being decided and discussed as a strategic planning process, this issue presumably would be presented if you weren't doing this strategic planning, uh, it's the issue of problems present, two years ago, problems present in the future, it's really up to you as a body to figure out when, how, and where you can do it, um, again, I'm just trying to manage expectations for your next meeting, uh, so that hencefully, if you're tonight, with some semblance of the administration, those buttons are pushed, um, so that you can use some data for the next month, presumably this issue may be on the agenda, um, so that everyone will have noticed how his name was improper, was improper, uh, but so that you can have what you need to make the decision, and/or to continue that, if that's...
Yeah, I would request a recommendation from the administration on where to set it this, in Taylor Lane, that would be great. Yes, moving on to new business, everybody? Anyone? All right, um, in that case, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
What comment?
Oh, another call to comment. Another call to comment, come on up, that's right.
I have one new...
Second show's different than the first show.
I choose one.
Oh, you choose one.
I would like to, um, with Mrs. Kennedy, a happy 60th birthday.
Oh, yay!
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Now that everybody knows. No, not tonight, not tonight, it's just a few days.
I was going to say, yeah, it's fire.
Hi, Rachel Knopf, I opened it, right? Comment, I was just... I'm going to try to speak quickly to a couple of things, one thing is just feedback, I just wanted to let the board know that responsive classroom, new initiative that's in the elementary schools, at least from my daughter's perspective, is a good creator, is tremendous, um, she absolutely loves it, and I can get little videos from her teacher through seesaw of what they're doing, the activities, she comes home talking about it every single day, it's a great conversation starter after school, and this morning, she had a dead disappointment at 10 o'clock, and I said, okay, well, I'll just bring you an answer, she goes, no, I want to go to the morning meeting, so bring me to school, and then pick me up, and then bring me back, so they are loving this, the elementary kids, so I'm just so grateful that as a district, you implemented this, because I think the benefits to our children, their character, their behavior, their social well-being, their anxiety level, stress are going to be tremendous within the coming years, so thank you for doing that, I think it's wonderful, and if you haven't seen these little videos, try to find some, because they're great, but what they're doing with the kids is awesome. Similarly, the reaching out thing for fifth graders with the municipal alliance, my daughter about to go last week, and it was another big conversation starter, she came home and I think could have recited the entire day to me, we talked so much about the various things that she had learned, about walking through South, getting to eat in the cafeteria, the fifth graders ate it up, so thank you for making that part of the day curriculum. Um, next thing I'm just jumping to, based on what was discussed earlier, um, for the Y Care program, I know that there was, you know, some tension and pickups last year when it came to contract renewal time, one thing I would urge you guys to do, and I don't even have kids in the Y Care program anymore, is to implement maybe a bi-annual or bi-yearly, I mean, every six months, a customer satisfaction survey, like, the Y is going to tell you what they want to tell you, um, the principals may not see everything that's going on, the parents hear from their kids and they're paying for it, so I would suggest to reach out twice a year and just say, what's going well, what's not going well, what would you change, what would you not change, and have some sort of data that you guys own when you're making a decision about what to do with those types of programs moving forward. Um, the next thing is related to strategic planning and the forums, when you guys talked about the format earlier, I've been getting asked a lot of questions about what are they going to be like, what do I have to do, do I have to prepare anything as a member of the public, and I know you're still figuring out what the kind of agenda will be, when you have it, please push it out as much as you can, if people are doing a SWOT analysis, and people should start thinking about how they view the district from a SWOT perspective, people can come prepare for that, and I think the better prepared public is, the more productive it will be for everybody, um, and also, I guess I would just make sure that school have strategies is ready to deal with the volume potentially of people coming to this meeting, I don't know how many members of the public they've had in the room, they've run these for other districts, but I anticipate there'll be a strong response, I think, just from what I'm hearing from my own little communities, I do think people are taking this very seriously, which is awesome, and they do plan on participating, so we've got to make sure we leverage that, they show up, they got to feel heard, they got to feel used and needed by the process, and I also just want to say thank you to the district that pushed the outreach through Facebook and other channels to get parents aware about the survey and taking it has been incredible, so I know that was discussed a lot in prior meetings, um, it's definitely working, I think, at least within, not Thor, but Thompson, the parents definitely know about the survey and the forums. And then, the very last thing is, I don't know if all of the schools are set to this temperature after hours, but I think we might be able to save some money if we turn the air off a little bit, it's freezing, and I, again, I've got this kind of a serious question, I don't know how we're regulating the temperature overnight in schools, but there might be some cost savings if we're temperature controlling to this degree when there's nobody in the building.
And you're just...
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Here, Pasake, Middletown, um, I just want to take a minute to thank, um, the group that's looking at the honor roll, um, I think that's, um, every kid is incentivized differently, my son was incentivized because he got breakfast, he got food, my daughter was incentivized because she got a card, and, you know, she came home proud, made this late, the one thing that I would ask, because there's nothing more beautiful than seeing a picture from a school, the honor roll, and it is a diverse space, uh, everything from children with all sorts of needs to the overachiever, but I've got to guess, an honor roll could be very incentivizing to kids that are even self-contained, or have IEPs, if you can find some way to reward those children who meet objectives, maybe not necessarily for grade, um, but I think that would be a wonderful thing to include everybody on that person, and thank you for looking at that, because the honor roll has always been some higher map that I never really figured out. Um, the other thing on strategic planning, um, just listening to everybody talk, and I suffer from being one of the ones that worked on the, um, the plan five years ago, so I kind of suffer from what I remember doing, so everything can be done different, everything can be looked at differently, but I would urge the board to make sure you understand what your role is in strategic planning, five years ago, the board could listen, could go to breakout sessions, but they did not speak, they did not influence, they did not, it was community-driven, so I see complex faces, but that was the way it was run, I see this being very different, or your expectations being very different, but the whole idea was that the board listened to the community, the administration listened, we had breakout sessions, and, um, and I thought, um, you know, I know you're being insult, but, you know, we're a free-for-all and things like that, I thought the administration and the community worked really well together, there were action plans, there were fates, there were deliverables that we worked on after the weekend session, now, where they followed, you know, that's another story, um, but anyway, so I would just, I don't know exactly what's going to happen, I mean, I would like to know if there's more public involvement after those forums, I don't know how it's going to work, but again, I would urge, if you guys, I don't know who put the survey together, I kind of wish there was a little more community involvement, I might have got, you know, people might have got some different changes, but I would just make sure that you understand what your role is, because if it's going to be board-driven, you might have a lot of people kind of sitting there, so I just make sure we get that to go ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Sue Griffin, I'm also here, um, first of all, a question, Sue from CPAC, and I'm very happy that you're looking in traditional parent voices for the CPAC, um, I agree with the recent meetings, I think those parents' wishes should come from, you know, town friends of different owners, I believe they fit the definition of CPAC as defined by the state. Um, I do have a question now, um, you said you have a representation of every disability, um, if you could be a little more specific, you know, not tonight, but moving forward, you know, children are so different, their disabilities are so different, you know, individuals, if you could give us categories moving forward as to what those disabilities are, so we could get major ones, try to give that up, and here are the situations that you're comfortable with moving forward. The second thing that I'd like to discuss is, um, the strategic planning with Thor, and I just want to throw out a date, um, 1999, 1999 was the first districting committee that it worked on in the new district, 20 years ago. The big thought is, 20 years ago, districts were exactly the same, all the same districts were exactly the same, since then, there was a, um, American Facilities Committee that is on in 2009, another strategic plan that we worked on in 2014, and a districting committee in 2017, it's not that we haven't addressed these things, it's not that we haven't tried, just a little, with all due respect, I think hard to focus itself, I know they weren't meant to, but I do hope that you can take the time to re-listen, to take this even, and evaluate what you said, and handle it instead, because it wasn't settled, a lot of time was spent in the strategic plan that you had, uh, five years ago, a lot of administrative time, a lot of board time, um, what you said, this wasn't settled, um, I hope that you guys get benefit from this strategic plan, but frankly, when you succeed, we all succeed, and I hope that five years from now, and for what happens in the future, they're greater. Thank you.
Okay, seeing anybody else come to the mic, see nobody else come to the mic, um, I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Two minutes. Please, two minutes.